All meetings are ordered seven oh four. Some announcements of meetings being broadcast on local cable TV and reported for rebroadcast on the local cable channels and the internet, being also accessible by remote participation. Instructions are in the bottom of the agenda posted online. West Newbury is in receipt of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars grant money from the FY24 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant. This is big news, we've talked about it at prior meetings, but we've been given the okay to talk about this publicly now. So anything you wanted to add on that Angus and others?
We have executed the contract with the Commonwealth, which is a necessary prerequisite to completing the contract with the vendor. They move very quickly, it can sometimes take weeks or more to get an executed contract and we got it really quickly. Which was great because as you know, times of the essence of that and we did just today actually execute the contract with GEI. So everyone's lined up, we're working to set up the kickoff meeting with the state we had offered next week. The administrative's out, so it should push it back a week. It's kind of like, we're trying to do two years of work in ten months and we just, every week it's just... But we're under contracts with them.
Great. So I just wanted to, for people that aren't aware of this program, the action grant projects are focused on proactive strategies to address climate change impacts. May include actions to invest in and protect environmental justice communities and improve public health, nature-based solutions to mitigate the impacts of extreme heat and flooding and climate resilience-focused regulatory updates. That's the mission of the program and this particular grant is evaluating vulnerabilities and options to promote resiliency on river road and other environments in town. Planning Board is having Housing Opportunities Initiative as we speak, Form Number Two. It will be recorded, so it can be viewed after the meeting tonight, and that's a follow-up to the two meetings they had back in June. Sage Center, there's a great September, October newsletter, lots of events and activities. That's also on the senior center's website. Fall Special Town Meeting takes place on Monday, October twenty-third at seven PM on the annex. Still looking for volunteers on several committees and boards. There's a tab on the homepage of the town website if you're interested in volunteering. Cable Advisory Committee is one that has an opening that really needs a third person to round the meeting. Any others that you are aware of?
It comes, so that's one opening.
Yeah. There's several, but I just like to highlight those that we know are in it. And then finally, reminder to subscribe for email town agendas, news announcements at www.wmory.org/subscribe. I also wanted to announce here, it's down under Town Manager Updates, but we have a notice about free cash certification by Master DOR. I just wanted to mention it in the announcements in case there are more people listening now. Angus, do you want to... You don't have to jump ahead to what you're going to say, but just if you could explain the significance of that.
Yeah, well, it was, you know, significant job by Angus, about 2.3 million, a little more than that. And that's what I expected, but it's certainly a healthy balance and will again raise the question of how much of that might we want to put in stabilization? But it's great. But to me, a huge takeaway, to get free cash certified in the month of August is unheard of. Not just here in West Newbury, but in the Commonwealth. So our town accountant deserves major recognition because it's just a huge amount of work and close the books. So the satisfaction DOR, you know, in past years, it's been, you know, sometimes we're on the cusp in terms of whether we can... You can't appropriate free cash at town meetings until it's certified. So it becomes real important to get it certified by town leader and it's often, you know, sometimes, you know, a sprint to get that done by mid to late October or even early November. So to get that done in August, I can, I was like flabbergasted to get that notification, so.
Thank you Jenny.
Thank you.
Teamwork.
Thank you. Great. Okay, so moving on to business.
You're going to elaborate on that more when you get to that.
Yes, I just wanted to mention it up front. Okay, item A, the resident request to recognize pregnancy and infant loss remembrance day, which is October fifteenth. So this is an annual day of remembrance observed on October fifteenth for pregnancy loss and infant death. This was brought to our attention by a resident who would like to have the town participate in this. Countries all over the world participate in it and typically involves having blue and pink lights on in public buildings. So Angus, I guess your office has spoken with Chief Dwyer about this and what was the outcome of that?
It's not, so Rebecca had the conversation, so my understanding was it's... There's things that we can do, we don't know exactly what we can do, we wanted to wait and see if the board was going to support recognizing this day. But there's lighting that can be done, it depends on how elaborate, you know, because you want it like up in the tower, you know, you're talking about lift. Anything can be done, it's a matter of, you know, kind of resources. I think at a staff level, we'd be very supportive of doing everything we can within, you know, within capacity to do this. We did reach out to Kentucky, where obviously they've got the extra colored lighting. We didn't know if maybe that had blue and pink capability, it doesn't, that would have been nice. And certainly, you know, we can certainly put things on our, you know, website, social media and commemorate, you know, it was a very important day. Resonates with a lot of people.
Okay, so this will, are you looking for input from the board?
Yeah, I think if we were to recognize it formally, we would look to the board to, you know, vote that recognition and then, and then we would just huddle at a staff level and, you know, be ready on October fifteenth to roll out lighting and some social media. One thing I thought, we could do that LED sign out front, that has the capability to do full color. We always only have used black and white to maintain kind of the decor. But I think on that day, that would certainly pop and draw attention to do something pink and blue. That would be very easy to do. Let's, yeah, that's true also. The residents did volunteer to fund the purchase of lighting, but we haven't talked specifics of like, what, you know, depending on how much lighting you put on and how much that will cost, so.
Well, I think the idea, you know, so I think the idea of using the誇張 lighting is great. You're talking about the display, is it right at the...
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that would be just on October fifteenth?
Yeah, well, the materials, you know, seem like that's the magic day and, and that you kind of put everything into that day and it's not like a week or a month, so. So that would also, I think, suggest doing something that's more, you know, just, you know, yeah, that would inform how much investment we made.
Yeah, well, that makes it from a sort of resource standpoint, makes it pretty easy to work with.
Very easy.
Because it just, you know, it'd be programmed by, you know, by whoever runs it, and that's from Chief Dwyer.
No, it's actually Jim and Rebecca.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I used to do it, but you can't really know. Yeah, I've been given the keys.
The only, I did mention this to Michelle, she said possibly lying on a building, it's kind of like funky dark skies in the sense of like projecting light on a building is not great.
Yeah.
But also, we also have to be careful of allowing events and how people's out for events, because I think Boston does, there'll be a problem with like anyone that's out there like racing flying. So like a satanic temple, so we want to do that.
Yeah.
And there was a whole spring quartet about that, so we just have to be careful of it.
Cool, yeah.
So it sounds like at a minimum, we could do something with the existing. So any other thoughts on this, Chris? So you mean in motion or just?
I think it would be nice.
Okay.
Okay, Rick, let me get my motion that we recognize pregnancy and infant loss remembrance day on October fifteenth, this October fifteenth. And, actually, yeah, so that's my motion and I'm making that for discussion, I guess.
Okay, that's enough for this.
So, should this be automatically recurring or should, you know, from now forever forward? Or should this be topic be revisited?
I mean, my preference is because it's something new, but we're going to revisit in a year, I think that decision at that point, yeah.
I think that sounds good, yeah. I was just concerned about, you know, saying that we're going to do this for every October fifteenth from now forward, but yeah. So, so then, I amend my motion that this October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and reconsider next year.
I think to Jim's point though too, you've got to be careful once you establish this opportunity. So I think rather than jumping into next year, maybe we'll help with the policy as to how these occurrences get addressed.
Yeah, having select work flow was very helpful.
We have no criteria.
Yeah, I was just out with Boston was that you could just sign up.
Yeah, and so as long as, as long as there's an approval process, that negates us having to do it.
Theoretically, somebody else could now sign up for the next month.
They could ask.
But they have stable stock.
On what criteria is what I'm saying? Objective, they can say you're unreasonable.
Well, yeah, but our, you know, our relatively objective, I wouldn't use the word relative, but our relatively objective purpose is that, you know, for, we believe it's for public benefit and benefits a significant portion of society.
So if we could come up with a policy, I might put you in charge of that.
We want to have a policy.
Angus, do you know if the resident was planning on attending, there's a number there, phone number that I just, if they want to...
She has been made aware, so, so I'm not sure where it's a unnamed number, I don't know if that's the resident or not, but.
Okay, is there anybody online that is interested in speaking to this topic? Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is a couple of special event permits, the Apple Harvest Road Race, October fifteenth. Jim's office emailed around the maps separately. Any further questions on that event?
There's reference to, but no clarity on if there is alcohol being provided. So they were not ready for seeking that, so as of right now, there is no alcohol. If they were going to go for what I said, pretty much next, next meeting is the only option they'll have. So they said they'll get back to me before.
And is that supposed to be, is it special back permits or not?
It's a one, it's a one-day liquor license, which is probably settled for.
But you're asking about the sixty days.
Yeah, sixty days.
Yeah, on the special.
But now, I thought there was some restriction about no alcohol on town properties.
No, that's the...
As long as there's approval from the board, because of the one day, that's, you can have a private event on private property. It's when it's allowed to the public, it's when they need to.
Allison, did you have?
Hi, Fundy, I just wanted to clarify, we did reach out to the Health Department and discussed the... We were not ready again to do alcohol, we weren't sure we wanted to commit to it. We do know, I think it's the eighteenth is the last date we would be able to apply for that permitting and they seem to think that was plenty of time. At this point, we're not moving forward with alcohol. We obviously would be really, very respectful to needing to apply if we do decide to go that route, but we didn't have any vendors lined up at this point.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, talking about signage at page school and the middle high school, that's not an approval, that would be through the school committee, wouldn't it?
What page is that on?
It is, it's a really small one because it's what that like a huge scale.
What, what number, Chris?
Hang on, itty bitties, twenty-four.
Yeah, we just can't answer what's like.
What number of the application are you referencing, where you see assigned? Number eleven, okay.
Page two, Bachelor Fields.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we can say yes to.
To the one that...
Our field, I'm not sure about the schools. They might just have to talk to the school committee on signage.
Right.
Yeah, so even Bachelor Fields, what is that?
No, that's us.
Yeah, so are you following this, Allison, and Jamie's on as well, I guess?
Yes, so the signage, we can definitely go through the schools if we need to for that purpose. As far as the Bachelor Field signage, in the past, the Apple Harvest run had hung a banner down at the ball fields for the year following the race with all of the sponsors that gave towards the school, so we're hoping that we could bring that back as well.
So the Park and Rec Commission owns that property, so you would have to get approval from them on that?
Okay.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think in general, I'm assuming you're going to be part of this next year because you're on such a great first year on this, right? I think as much as possible in the application, instead of saying same as prior years, if you could just treat it like we've never seen this before, that would be helpful. Just because the board changes, you know, every year, so just...
Absolutely.
And by the next year.
It was quite a process for us to try and figure out, we actually pulled the application from 2013 is what we were initially going off of, because that's all we had. And then we took what we had on the last year's application, so I think it'll be a much easier process for us next year now that we are a little more understanding of how it works. Thank you for...
Yeah, but just in general, if you can sort of pretend that we know nothing at all about it, obviously we all do know something about, but pretend that we know nothing about it and then put it all in the application each time, it'd be great.
Thanks, Chris.
Least detailed, it'll lose, it's going to be notified by the parental, this is a two-santa, they got at least, there's really no definition of how many or what they're doing.
I thought that he approved it.
Thanks for reaching out, that's good. So from the implication I got was that there's going to be detailed officer, there's going to be alcohol, there will be secondary detail. That's what it alludes to, but it doesn't state it, it's really squishy, but as long as it will be at least one.
Is that the plan? Allison, there's one police detail?
Jamie, I don't know if you've heard back from Chief Dwyer on this, I actually, I spoke with Duncan, he's from the fire department. They're actually helping us in cooking this year to kind of bring the community in a little bit more. And I think there was a couple of police details from my conversation with him, I can definitely ask further. But I do not have clarity on how many, Jamie, do you? No?
I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't get any correspondence back, but I can follow up with him.
Jim, they have, is that a, they need to call up on you just to make sure that gets addressed?
And with the trip, yeah.
Was that provided?
I am not.
Okay, so we also need the insurance certificate?
Yes, we did request that, so it's getting, as soon as it gets to us, we'll forward that over to you.
Okay.
How do you make a motion?
So we're just, it's going to have to be contingent on receipt of the certificate of insurance and satisfactory...
Least detailed.
Explanation of the police coverage, are there any other items?
And go through the two.
And sign permissions granted by others. Is that your motion?
That's exactly what it was.
All right, second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, Allison and Jamie, thank you. So just some final last minutes to clean up, but I think you're good to go, you can get those taken care of.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Myopia Hunt Club, so there's actually three dates here, right? October thirty-first. November eleventh.
October fourteenth.
All right, Chris, did you have?
Well, simple things like the application's not even signed by their group.
Yeah, one of them is.
The certificate of warrants attached. Now, does the town verify the limits and everything, Angus? I mean, here it comes from Myopia Hunt Club, it's to town of West Newbury Pike State. I'm just making sure the limits are agreeable, and it's only attached to the one packet, not all three, so if you approve, are you approving all three as a group or just one?
Does the certificate of insurance specify what date? Is it just...
The date when it went into...
I assume that means it covers three then?
Jim, I don't listen to anything.
All right.
I don't know.
Is that generally how it works, Jim?
Generally, it would be to cover their activities within the town.
Okay, for a year or?
Yeah, usually.
Yeah, there must be, there must be somewhere here the date range. Didn't see one.
I didn't see any of that.
Policy from July first, twenty twenty-three to July first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, it sounds like a date range to that, we wouldn't see that.
Commercial general liability under headwind insurance. And then access liability additionally from July first, twenty twenty-four, yeah, July first, twenty twenty-four, excellent.
I had a question on number thirteen, it says we will provide street crossers, is that acceptable to the police department to have residents?
This has come up a couple of times over the years and I believe Dwyer has been agreeable to that, that they would basically designate their own person to assist with crossing, rather than police detail.
I think it's also the not, I don't think there's a large amount of horses that go through.
No, there's not.
Yeah, I think that's why the chief was a little more agreeable, because there wasn't like a line of horses.
I just wonder what the town liability is.
So actually next, I think it's next Tuesday, Rebecca and I have our annual meeting with insurance, so we do like, it's like a half a day. We go through every policy, it's every year around this time, it's very, but it's, it is a good opportunity to, you know, ask any open questions and I think walking them through something like this, say what's our exposure, this is what we're requiring, is this sufficient? Because while we have really drilled down on some other insurance issues, this is one where we've just kind of done what the policy says. And it's been handled the same way the five years I've been here, I said I have done it for many years before that, we haven't changed anything. And it's, I think it's worth a conversation with the first man here.
Do we have the horse crossing rider?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know how insurance people are, they tend to be very conservative, but at least that, what do we have, ice paddle. I mean, you saw for us in like the parade, you know, we had some changes with the, we ran the parade and things like that. This is the thing, we haven't, we haven't got that specifically other than to just follow what the policy does.
So is that something that could be added?
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about it actually.
Rick or Chris, any other questions?
Yeah, there's a couple of these talks about it's left with sixty days of the annual fee to be paid. Are they paying the fee?
Well, if you approve it, I can make sure they do report. October thirty-first, if it doesn't make it. Yeah, well, Jim takes care of that.
So I see the date, let me see, one of them is signed, eight fourteen twenty-three.
One is signed.
Yeah.
So do they all commit at the same time, Jim?
Yeah. So it was, it was an additional one that's closer. Looks like they received on the fifteenth of August.
Yeah, so then it would satisfy sixty days there again.
Yeah.
There's two that aren't signed, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Actually, I didn't have one last thing to ask for. I would love to see an approved map, not a fancy map, but just a map where you can actually see what's, read what's on it. Because I've tried to, you know, I know the streets reasonably well and I know a lot of the trails in town and I've tried to follow these and couldn't.
I did ask for our map specifically, because I know last year we had, we had the same discussion and that's what this has made. Yeah, I would say they, they, over the years, I mean, I know like Andrew Serra is always like resistance to provide it because I think, I think the culture over many, many years was they just did this and so that's petition at all has not that well received. I think this has been the first time they're asked to pay a late fee, I'm quite sure Jim will get some flack for that. The maps have come up every year and they kind of grudgingly give us like the same recital map. I think what I'm getting from this conversation is I think we need to, because these have routinely been kind of rubber stamp type issues and I think if this is the type of expectation that this board has, I think we need to be letting the applicants know they need to be present for these discussions.
Yes, okay, well, you know, for instance, when it comes to the running events, you know, we've, we've been asking for better maps, we've been asking for things to be more understandable.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think it's unreasonable.
No, I don't think it's unreasonable either, it's just that, that's like cultural change.
Page thirty-seven, you got a map for a lot of the events, it's got a narrative about Back to Scott's driveway proceeding, they're going through people's properties. And my question here was, do they need or have permission to go through all these properties? Just because we endorse where they're going, we're just doing it on the public component.
And we, for several of them, there are right ways that they have access to.
Yeah, we just, I have no idea, it's a very...
Yeah.
So they say electronic map on file with town, do you know what that means?
That's just their way of saying, why do you keep asking us?
Yeah, well, so the other issue, this is the Open Space Committee map, I don't think it's appropriate to use this map. It's their base map that suggests that the Open Space Committee is on board with this, which... Page thirty-two, I think I brought this up last year, that they need to get their own map and I use Open Space Committee's map unless they got approval, so.
Oh, well, on that hyperlink, there is a malicious hyperlink.
Is it really?
It really is, at least there was a couple of years ago, that wet Newburyopen space dot net, because no one in the modern era had permissions to it and it got hijacked, it got purchased, the URL expired, it got purchased by a malicious actor and I remember, this is back when, you know, my first year but we had to drop everything and purge this from anywhere on our site, because it is, at least back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it was a malicious thing. from anywhere on our site, because it is, at least back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it was a malicious thing.
Well, that's even more even. All right, Jim, you can see the bad guy.
Uh, if we ever quote, uh, contingent upon the, uh, new maps being submitted, I think that would be fine.
New maps being submitted, signature on all event pages, all three?
And pretend like we've never seen them before.
Anything else do you want to add going forward? I guess I made that motion.
So with all those contingencies, if you're asking for a vote, I.
Could I have a second, Chris?
No second, okay.
All in favor? I don't. All right. Sorry, this is trying not to be such a grind.
Well, I think the submittals, not just for these people, but all of them have to become a little cleaner and crispier.
Yeah.
They're sloppy.
Yeah, because they've been allowed to be sloppy, you know, so that's, I understand. Okay. Item C, public hearing regarding short-term rental application, twelve Maple Street. So I think in terms of the way this will go, um, the board will discuss. I don't know, we don't have any staff here to provide input, but um, then we'll ask the applicants if you would like to provide any input. And we'll come there. So, um, so in the package, we have information from our building inspector who said that this is not allowed to use under the zoning bylaws. Is that correct, Angus?
Yeah.
Okay. So given that that's the case, is it appropriate to have a public hearing on this? I mean, how?
Well, we need to have to discuss it.
Just.
I, I would say so. Yeah, yeah. And I would say that the, the building inspector's authority is under a certain, um, you know, the zoning bylaw. This is not a zoning, um, application. So, uh, obviously any, um, you know, if this is where it'd be allowed, it would be contingent on receiving all other necessary permits. It's, it's clear to me based on the written record that an occupancy permit wouldn't be forthcoming. Uh, so I think that does put this board in kind of a tricky spot, because you have, you know, the building inspector saying it's not allowed, but this is not a zoning determination. And one of the concerns I have is, uh, if you were to take action relying on that opinion, if the applicant wanted to, didn't agree with that, um, and wanted to appeal that, the, the path to appeal a building inspector denial is very clear and straightforward. The path to appeal a, a denial of a short-term rental app, license application is not as clear as the bylaw is, um, clear. So I think it puts it, uh, puts, I think it puts you in a tricky situation.
Yeah. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, in the packet, there were several references to a butter notification. Um, that is not required in the short-term rental bylaw. And Angus and I had a conversation last week and we decided that we were not, or two weeks ago, we decided that we were not going to do that. Um, if it's something that the board really wants to have, you know, we can um, do that going forward and just delay.
Um, I discussed it previously. I was gonna do it as a courtesy, because of regulations that swap over there.
Yeah.
We did. I mean, part of my concern, uh, you know, when this thing, when this application came in in late, uh, spring, early summer, it was initially clear there was gonna be at least the, the issue with the building inspector's memo, which came in promptly and there was some follow-up and, and, you know, we uh, you know, his opinion is unchanged. Um, I remember back in June, when we talked about it, I, your early meeting in early June was when the board had talked about sending a, a butter notification. I had hoped that by the time this hearing was scheduled, some of these issues would have been worked out. What's been clear to me is they're not. It's a lot, it looks like there's a lot of disagreement on, on a couple of different areas. So unfortunately, that's, you know, presented you with kind of the background and, and the materials that you have in front of you. But it's not like a nice, clean uh, you know, uh, hearing. So I felt like sending a butter notification when it's not required by the bylaw. First of all, that's the town paying to send that, because you can't require the applicant that's not required. Uh, but secondly, I felt like there was a potential it could get somewhat messy and nuanced, because there's more than thirty years of history on some of these issues, like the stuff that, that's been a point of disagreement, I believe, for over thirty years. So it just felt like, you know, maybe sending thirty of other notifications and getting a whole room full of neighbors might not be conducive to actually having, you know, having the board engage with the application and with the applicant, so. So I, I had, I had some misgivings about sending the notices. I reviewed it with Wendy and, and she, she said, you know what? Let's, let's have the hearing and, uh, like she said, if that's a material issue for the board and you wanna postpone, you could do that. But I, personally, I did not think it was gonna be constructive to have a bunch of neighbors, uh, given that there seem to be a lot of unresolved issues in the application.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the intent was to discuss this at our last meeting and let you know what we were thinking, both of us. Um, without to bring it up, so apologize for that. So if it is something you feel strongly about, Chris, we can.
I would, because they have a rule, I'm not sure. If I was in a butter, I would like to have heard about it. Again, I, I'm just, the regulations we have is so poorly written.
Yeah.
I mean, I could deal with that.
Yeah. Uh, Rick, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't know. Um, well, I, I guess if the buildings, I'm not sure why we're looking at it. If the building inspector said that it doesn't apply to the zoning bylaw, um, I'm not sure.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Chris?
Well, I think it, I think what we have to do is give the youngest the opportunity to make a presentation.
Yeah.
And then my anticipation is we will endorse it in some fashion or form, based on approval from the building inspector and probably Allison. Like that.
That's one option, but the other option is, is to not consider it, because it's not allowed to be used. So those are the two options we have here. But I, I do agree that we, we give the youngest a chance to speak, but I just wanna kind of frame the discussion, like what, what are our options? You know, what information can we have and what not?
I, yeah, just don't wanna create more quagmire than I created about all of this. I, I would suggest you let them have a presentation and again, if there are questions involved and they have a format, what we wanna do.
Yeah, I just, um, there has been an incredible amount of staff time put into this already and I think we have a lot on our agenda. So I wanna try to not have this be an extended conversation. Angus, did you have anything else you want to add?
I would just say, I think you have, you know, as you consider that the application and the specifics, you know, in general, you have two options. So you could, um, you know, deny or you could approve with conditions. And obviously, if you approve with conditions, you know, that would include compliance with all other aspects of, you know, uh, zoning and, uh, building code and fire code and all of that. So we have clear basis with what's in the record to know that an occupancy permit would not be forthcoming, would be denied at a building inspection, so.
Feels kind of disingenuous to me.
I agree, yeah, I agree. But, but I would say that if it's gonna be appealed, the appeal counter, you know, it, it would put everyone in a tough spot. If the sole basis for a denial were the building inspector's opinion, I think that's difficult, that's problematic, because this isn't the right venue to appeal that. The right venue to appeal that opinion is to the ZBA, you know?
Ask, Dennis, do you want?
Yes, we would. Uh, good evening. My name is Dennis Ungar. I've been in town since nineteen eighty nine. Um, you know, we have, um, issues that are so controversial, so that the people who are looking at them wear diapers when they happen.
I don't think that's true for me, but.
Paul is, Paul's good kid. And I have no problem with Paul. Um, I think that Paul, um, goes out and deals with me all the time and we laugh about some of the things that are happening and he says, well, I was in diapers back then. Okay. Uh, yeah, these are old. But there are two lawsuits and they were settled. And this is the settlement agreement. The settlements between Bridget Hemingway and Dennis and Phil Sumner, stipulation of dismissal with prejudice was signed on June twentieth, nineteen ninety one. The um, stipulation of dismissal between Dennis Ungar and the board of health was signed on June twentieth, nineteen ninety one. Everything that we entered into an agreement in nineteen ninety one to leave this in the past. This was settled, it was over, and it's supposed to be over. And it's settled with prejudice. It cannot go back to bullet. But get used to us. This in the bylaw. When I purchased this property, this was the H. D. Bailey House. A second addition that was done a hundred years ago. Carriage house and shed, it stands over a hundred feet across. And house of the family of nine. At the time, we were a family of two. Myself, my daughter, my wife. We've never become anything more than a family of two.
Three.
We're two now, but we are actually before. We have a grand. We have since put solar panels to a hundred percent. Uh, renewable energy, we have thermal solar, we have all these accommodations we need for the rest of our life. Then designed, it's handicapped accessible, and I'm gonna live here the rest of my life. Okay? Every time we have discussions about stuff, I next thing I think. And, uh, well, let me do it again. And, um, you know, we went to the DEP and the DEP came up with a new one and were satisfied with it. We have no problem. Um, in addition to that, with, if we get a use for this building, um, we would get involved in water conservation. Um, some of the latest stuff is, uh, reusing gray water, uh, so we can further diminish our flows and make it even more viable than it is now. Not, and this is all voluntary. We don't have to do that, but we will be doing that, because we're interested in that kind of thought. Let me see. So anyway, uh, we, we prepared for you a, um, a layout plan for a, um, for a short term rental. And, uh, we go to the Airbnb's a lot. Uh, we go to five-star Airbnb's only. Uh, they're very personalized by the style. They really take care of you. They treat you like they're part of the family. And when you have, um, people like that, you say, wow, um, they seem to be enjoying this. They like hosting. Maybe we'd like that in our retirement. Maybe we'd enjoy hosting people. And Airbnb is very, very different than a hotel, because, uh, the host gets to see who you are. They always ask, what are you doing? Why are you coming? And sometimes it's, oh, you won't be able to visit island for a week. Sometimes it's, we're on our way, our way somewhere. We want to stay in your place one day. Whatever the reason, we are five-star guests, people like us. Um, this would be a five-star rental. Um, this is not like, we'll put a air mattress in our living room. This is what people pay extra for. The ability to come to a place that has the private patio, a little grill, um, privacy. Uh, it turns out it's a brewery. Um, you know, it's a specialty thing and people pay extra for specialty things. Um, we stayed in the Airbnb that was boat. Fifty footer, stationed here at the dock. It was the highest Airbnb we ever paid for. It was fun. My wife had a chance to be on paddle boat, like sit up high. Went on the dock side. And that was because we got an accident with our boat. We didn't get to use it that year. But anyway, um, our intention is simply enjoyment. We want to enjoy our retirement. But we're gonna be here anyway, you know? We don't really enjoy picking people around that much. But, um, you know, right and right. We won those two lawsuits. And it was agreed that this would be dismissed with prejudice and that won't die. We don't wanna have to come in and make it die. They were very ugly old lawsuits the first time. They'll be more ugly this time.
So Dennis, can I ask you, what is your response to the building inspector's determination or opinion that this is not allowed to use?
This is not an apartment. Ian said that an apartment must be attached. This is shared space. We have twelve rooms in our building. And we are sharing a space with someone who wants to visit us. It's not an apartment. We know it's not an apartment. We're not asking for the apartment. He's talking about an apartment. The last time we went to the building code board of appeals, we what? Okay. Uh, cause he's wrong. The decision as to whether or not it is zoning compliant was made in nineteen ninety, when the first building permit was issued by Mr. Hemingway. Mr. Hemingway has to make a determination before he gives us a building permit. And that determination is it. It's not subject to revision. It's not subject to the next guy's opinion. It's not subject to over and over and over review. And it's not subject to argument. Doesn't matter what people say about it.
What was that? What use was that for, that original?
It was for the replacement of some building area that we lost in the fire. And at the time, it was to be used for a professional home office, which is an occupied space, residential occupied space. And that space was described to him as exactly what we have in April now, because at the time I lived in the Victorian in April and I had an office just like the one that's here now. Only it's here, so I don't have to begin. That's what was approved, right or wrong, Mr. Hemingway's opinion as to the zone is what sticks. It's residential space that's occupyable. That was his opinion. The zoning board appeals won't waste ten minutes deciding that we're right.
Uh, Chris, Rick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I was as you know, I had problems reading this.
Yeah.
So I haven't read, um, the entire set of information, but my understanding from what I did read is that, or the impression was that it was actually, there were two different structures. There's the, the back building or barn. And then there's the front house.
It's a character.
There, there are two completely separate instructions on the plan. Yeah, the plan shows two completely separate structures. This is the front structure. That's the old stuff that we got rid of. That's the second structure. That's what we improved as the zoning compliant in nineteen ninety by the city.
They're connected by heating system, the water system, and that's how they're connected. They share the same systems.
They have the same domestic hot water. They have the same electric system. They have the same heating system. They have the same communication system. They have the same phone system.
Ask a question? I see this as two separate issues, one which can be, I believe, readily solved. And the other may be more problematic. The first one is the way the building inspector sees it and. The first one is the way the building inspector sees it and the way I see it, it currently doesn't comply with existing zoning. That's issue one, issue two is your subject, the zoning issue. The planning board has the accessory dwelling unit zoning by law change coming at the fall town meeting.
Sure.
If you could, I I would be fairly confident that's gonna pass. That would eliminate your biggest problem right there.
Okay.
So would it not be better to continue this until after the town meeting?
I've already said I would be willing to continue with.
I just think that simplifies, it it takes that issue off the table.
That would be good.
The ways only currently agrees, now I don't know about your lawsuits from ninety eight, ninety-one, whatever. But you 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 would have to be attached in order to have, I have the same problem, I have a big barn behind my house.
Sure.
I could never put a person in there, if they pass the accessory accessory dwelling unit, you can do it to nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
That would facilitate and eliminate.
That's true, and at any time, I have to get down and see the D E P and find out exactly what their ruling means. And um, we're going with the D E P. Um, whatever they say, it's what's gonna go.
We'll do that in conjunction with Paul because that's what we have to go with.
Sure.
Paul becomes in agreement with the D E P and you that that.
Well, Paul doesn't disagree with the D E P.
Well, the paperwork that's presented.
Yeah.
Looks a little different, that's all I'm saying, I wish Paul were here.
I did talk to him today.
Yeah.
And and he said the D E P said it's limited to two hundred twenty.
Yeah. And we're using seventy.
Well, but but that. That's great, but you know, that's not a guarantee.
Well, no one has a guarantee.
Right.
What if I built it for six sixty?
Yeah.
And I didn't stay inside the six sixty?
Yeah.
No one's guaranteed.
Yeah.
We have a history of using about seventy gallons.
Yeah.
Okay?
For the past thirty years.
And now we're also gonna get more conservation. And then on top of that, Paul can keep an eye on our meter, and boy, if we can hit it, we'll hit some more high technology.
Yeah, I I I don't think anybody's gonna try to micromanage your water usage that way.
No.
Well, again.
The fact is though, that something could happen, you could decide to sell the home, and if this is already permitted based on, you know, your seventy gallons, that's not gonna, you know. It has to go based on the number of bedrooms, not.
Well, that's, the D E P has said twenty gallons per day.
Right.
We're going down to see them to find out exactly what that means.
Yeah.
And if we meet their criteria, and we feel like we'll continue to meet their criteria, then we meet it. It's that simple, what if any, none of these lasts forever, they're all gonna fail someday, then they have to be repaired.
Uh, first of all, two.
No, I I was just gonna say that this isn't something that we're gonna do three hundred sixty-five days a year. This is, you know, a week here, a week there, maybe, maybe. Three or four months out of the whole year, you know, but it's not something that, you know, it's like all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think we're even at the point of considering the merits, I mean, it sounds wonderful what you're describing, but we're still trying to figure out the zoning piece of it and and history, as you mentioned, the subject.
Well, I'll have a lot more information on the D E P by the time the town's meeting is over. And I'm sure it's both me and Paul, and we're the D E P.
So can I ask Angus, am I mistaken, if we pass the accessory dwelling unit by law, that would facilitate his ability on this property?
I think the zoning piece, I think I agree with what you said, that that.
But I would like to suggest, if we continue the hearing, you can pick a date if you want, after the town meeting. See how that shakes out, see if you can get clarity of D E P and Paul, and then notify if I doesn't have a real error. That's what I would like to see.
Is a hearing to be required by the A D U by law? I mean, the fact that we're requiring a hearing, but it's not required by the bylaw, I think is problematic. And that was just kind of a general.
The hearing they use, so, I mean, effectively, they use it as a uh, D E P.
Right. But the the short term rental by law does not require a hearing, so I I feel like it's a little bit problematic to just throw that in there because of.
Okay, so we just pass on it right now?
Yeah.
And can you withdraw the application?
We're not gonna withdraw.
Well, if if the application is for short term rental and you're not even con- you're contemplating using the accessory dwelling unit.
Well, we had to agree, we can continue this until after the town meeting.
So one of the proposed warrant articles is to abolish the short term rental by law because it's so flawed.
Okay.
So um, you might want to reconsider.
Reconsider what?
Um, if you. I I think you have to decide, you know.
If there were no short term by law at all, we wouldn't be asking at all, we'd just be on B A B and B, just like everybody else.
Right, but that would be against the zoning, so unless the A D U passes, so I mean, you're kind of at a tough point because all these moving parts are happening.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. So I I, Chris, my point is, we can't just continue hearing, yeah. Yes, uh, I would advise that you look at the accessory dwelling unit by law.
I would.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I I had sent Mr. Unger the listening session, I think, you know, the notice a couple of months ago, because right away, it was clear, like, that would be something you would wanna pay attention to, that.
No, I'm already agreed to wait until that.
But I think the timeframe on those, I mean, there's rental requirements, but it's more long term rental, it's not Airbnb type rentals. I I don't recall, or I don't know where they landed on that, but um. It's designed for long term rental.
Well, you know, the whole the A D U, I think, is to try to increase the amount of available housing in town, not not just to increase short term rents. And that's that's the purpose of the A D U, is provide housing in town, for people who will live here.
Well, you know, it's a movie tag, you know, honestly.
Yeah.
I'd like to be continued until after the year, until after the meeting.
So I guess the short term rental by law is um abolished? And we have to continue hearing, I mean, how how is that?
Well, uh, I I I think it would be, you you could.
It'd be very messy.
Basis to to deny it, I mean, a license is revocable. And uh, the board, I believe, is under any obligation to approve a license, it's not a right, it's not a zoning situation.
In this, in the current short term rental by law, isn't, doesn't require annual renewal?
It's for us, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is one of the things that a prior applicant, I think, two years ago, had had raised that concern, that they have to make improvements, that use it for that purpose.
Yeah.
And there was no doubt. Revoked at the end of the calendar year. Uh, that was one of the flaws that, whether it's a flaw or not, it was a question that that we didn't really have an answer to, because we didn't know, none of us were here when it was written, and why it was written that way.
So our options are to deny it based on the building inspector's opinion, um. Approve it pending uh occupancy permits from the board's board. Infer.
You're pretty concerned here, yeah.
Continuance isn't gonna help, and then, yeah, short term by law goes away, that's the problem, so that doesn't become a valid option, I guess. Denial is just gonna put it into nullification, so my preference is to agree with. Building inspector, occupancy permit, and subject. If you can get those approvals, we should not have a problem.
Okay. But then, if if we were to do that, and the short term rental by law was um, was abolished at town meeting.
Yeah, well, you know. I I think um, the most favorable thing is to approve on contingency, and we'll work on the zoning, the uh, the zoning may let itself out. And we'll work on the with the D E P. Obviously, we're not gonna go into business until those are solved.
I I think we should continue until after town meeting. I think it's only a plus too.
That kills it instantly for the, for the.
If the short term rental by law.
Right.
Gets extended, the time limitation, you know, minimum rental limitation. Minimum rental period requirement in the A D U by law. And I don't know that detail, I remember our discussion, but I don't know what the resolution was.
Your time frames, yeah.
Yeah.
See, we talked a while ago about the the current um, short term rental. By law, whatever it's called, and it was terrible, so we agreed back in June, to take it to town meeting. And revoke it, and then at a certain point in time, come back with a new one, which we have no inkling when that is at this point.
Well, that's still what we either accept it or reject it, and that way we have no direction to go. I mean, otherwise, we don't have any direction. If uh, you approve it contingent, we'll work on working out the detail. If you disapprove it, then we'll have to figure out whether or not it's with any factor, so by the way, or whether or not.
I'm not, I personally think, I would like to see these kind of things in town, but the building inspector said we're not a lot of need for, so who knows? But I'm not opposed to the the concept of it, you should, to get it done right. Now try a motion if you want.
With with that in mind, in terms of getting it done right, my my recommendation would be whether you're trying to vote one way or the other. Uh, I think you ought to have a written draft decision in front of you, so that whatever action you take is memorialized and clearly written, whether that's a denial or approval of conditions. So if you gave me, and I know, you know, back in my little town planner days, we would always have a draft decision before the board when they would vote. Uh, and uh, I remember in one or two instances, we drafted a denial and we drafted an approval of conditions, because we had no idea, at a staff level, we had no idea which direction the board would go. Uh, so I don't know if you wanna give me some direction as to which you're inclined to do, or or we could draft both, but I I, my point is, you should have something in writing when you take the vote, rather than. Me after the fact having it memorialized, and what you think, when you vote, it should be clear to you and and in the record, what the what the basis of the vote was.
You're coming at it from the zoning planning board perspective, because we.
Yeah.
Same thing happened right there, because if you deny it, anything that they can rectify, then they can come back and get the permits.
Right.
So this is slightly different, but I I get your point.
Yeah, yeah, but as you can see with kind of that, I didn't know coming in, and I I really had no, no idea what direction it might go, so.
I think I think we should continue until after town meeting, I I think there'll be more clarity at that point in time. Because there there are two different by laws, one is only by law, the other one is town by law, that are. Um. And either or both of those. Could impact this, so to me, it's silly at this point in time, with that much unknown, to uh, to vote on it.
But fairness to Dennis, I think reasonable expectation. If the short term rental by law go away at town meeting. Then you wouldn't have the opportunity to do what you do. You probably have a much more favorable chance than accessory dwelling unit, but that's not short term rental.
Well, we've done landlords in the past, and that's a lot of work, we're looking for something that would be incentive, um, quiet enjoyment about property.
So 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 if this were approved with the conditions you suggested. And then at town meeting, the short term rental by law. Um, this this bar.
The what's left?
The license would be granted.
Right, right, yeah, license would be granted, it would last for another another six weeks. Or, I guess, ten weeks, or eleven, whatever, um, and then. And that'd be it. I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it's gonna still have been enough to work out.
Nothing's made sense for, since nineteen ninety-one, uh, so it's without making sense. Uh, we prefer that you um, act on it favorably with conditions, without conditions, and just get over it.
I think it's silly to vote on something when when there's so much up in the air, um, you know, and and.
Well, I mean, you could deny it because it's not up in the air, you know. I mean, maybe that's something to do, is deny pending, you know, outcome of the town meeting warrant articles, and, you know, if it's appropriate, reconsider it after.
Yeah, well, and also with consideration of what Angus said, I mean, typically, um. You know, there would be a decision at least roughed out in writing prior, prior to a vote, um, I don't, I I at least didn't know exactly what we were coming into here, and um. I think there's too much likelihood, too high a likelihood that um. That whatever we state as our decision. Now, without adequate thought, um, be a problem.
Well, could we close the public hearing, and then you can take as much time as you want to decide what you want to?
I think the motion, we continue until our next meeting.
And have a written opinion, or a written decision.
Well, we have to decide what that's gonna be now.
Or they could be both, I mean, how much extra work could it?
Uh, I I don't, I I don't think it would be, I'm happy to do it both.
I think then I can avoid a lot more conversation tonight, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Can I be part of your motion?
And go to the next meeting, so that Angus can draft up two options, denial with the approval of condition.
All right, second.
Okay, we can wait till we have more, till till we have some certainty about, I mean, there will, will be certain issues about which we have certainty after town meeting. And. I think any, any decision at this point. Could prove to be flawed, and and basically a waste of time, being worthless. But it's always choice, that's right.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all favor?
Aye.
Don't boast, many.
So what is, did I show what you said, I heard you say name?
Yeah.
What was the motion opposed to?
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay, all right.
No, that, wait.
Would you make a motion so that we know what you're voting?
I did make the motion.
I didn't hear you.
Was to continue to our next meeting, and Angus would draft up the two options for continuation.
Okay.
That's it.
Sure, I'll 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 make a motion that we continue it to, um, we should pick a date certain after town meeting.
Okay, when's our first meeting after um? How many, Jim, you happen to know?
It would be, we we, I was looking at the calendar the other day, I don't think we set the meetings past. Yeah, so it could be the thirtieth, or it could be the first Monday in November, and it it all depends on if we go to. Every other week, and whether we wanna try to avoid having a meeting on Monday after Thanksgiving, so sometimes we, you could just.
To our next meeting in November, or first meeting?
Yeah, and then I think to Chris's point, you know, I don't have a problem with sending a butter notification, and I had made Dennis aware back in June that that was an expectation of the board.
Wasn't likely.
I just felt like, you know, it wouldn't be, but I think we'd be happy to do that.
If we extend this to after town meeting. And the short term by law goes away, you have one option, that's accessory dwelling, that's it, so we're not involved at that point, we're not even meant to have it here, so just vote it down, if that's the case. That that's a, it's a non-option, to do it, to continue after town meeting, won't work, if, well, that's if.
Yeah.
Okay, I just. I just don't think it's fair to the applicant on that call.
Well, yeah, I don't think it's fair to us as a board to have to vote on something that we know is gonna be changed, and, you know.
I come up with the motion.
Did you make the motion?
I did, I think, what I wrote, if we needed a first select, we're meeting after, so I'm leaving, where? And uh.
All right, second. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't boast, aye. That being it.
Yes, I'm a close.
Sorry, the the timing on this is just really challenging.
That timing for the thirty is for us, so we're pretty much in swit. Um, we'll be just fine.
I I would encourage you to look into the accessory dwelling unit by law and see if that can accomplish.
I I'll be honest with you. Um, you know, that's my office for thirty-five years, I'm never gonna retire as long as I'm standing. Uh, but I don't need a big office anymore, but an empty building is a dead building, okay?
An empty building is a dead building. If you look out there, you're not using the building, the roof is falling off. You let it fall off and and it goes into the ground like your brick structure down the street. If you don't have a purpose for something, it dies, and we don't want our buildings to die. We want them to have a purpose.
Because it's only just rebuilt anyway after the fire.
And the other thing too, I mean, just real quick, because I know this has been my treatment, that was, um, is that, you know, it it helps that we retire them. And in town, a lot of people are leaving because of the taxes. And, you know, I I think the senior citizens in this town need some relief.
That's the the main point of the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, but the short term rental also helps. You know, so it's just another alternative. That's all. That's all.
Well, maybe you can make that work for him, yeah.
Well, we always make it work.
All right, thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Sorry to keep this hold on. It's okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, item D, select order review of committee's charge function. Rob is not here.
I was surprised.
Sure.
So is it, should we continue without his uh? I guess we can still discuss that, right?
Okay, there are comments, you know.
Yeah. Or maybe you just, it feels like it's still straightforward, if you know, if necessary. Chris, do you have any thoughts about this?
I'd seen it before, because he sent it to me, so.
Did they discuss it at my meeting meeting? Or did Rob just write it?
No, they did, it'll be with the life that's for him, worried about it. I mean, I I think it's very good, so.
Did you have a chance to look at this for me?
I did, yeah, yeah, I thought. About all named tenants, and uh.
I was interested to note that under how can the select board help you? The the point that they, we remember, we need to remember that there are obligations directly to the citizens and not to any other board position. That seemed like kind of a veiled um back off of statements, but um, yeah, but it does reflect state statute. I don't know, I I think the direction the finance committee is going with having joint meetings to consider warrant articles as a positive one. So let me have something that's come out of this um, this finance committee. Any other questions or comments on this?
No.
All right, oh, they went through the exercise, so that's the point, and Chris, you are the liaison. All right, item D, select, uh, sorry, receipt of draft West Sampson report regarding potential water testing theory on Dole Place. Bob James is here for that item, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay, have you seen the report?
I have, but.
Okay, a copy was sent to Mark and Angus, and then we have it on, so this is on the town website, Angus, correction?
Yeah.
So, um, it seems to me like the the basic thing that I would like to accomplish tonight is whether we want to stick with the six feet benchmark, because that pretty much makes Dole Place underwater. You know, that makes it a not an ideal well field. Um, the benchmark that um, the state usually uses is a hundred year plus three. So Rick, I love your thoughts about that. I mean, I feel like that's what we, what Western Sampson needs from us is um, guidance on if we want to stick with that six year, and and that will inform, you know, their future work on this site, or whether it even makes sense.
So, my understanding is that this this state has, and and think about, you know, there have been multiple updates of 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 flood levels. And and uh you know, so we we went with the number that you know, our neighboring community, Newburyport, had arrived at after considerable effort, considerable study. Um, we didn't attempt to duplicate what they had done, or to replicate what they had done. Um, and you know, we're we're looking, I I want so much for this to work. But we're talking about many millions of dollars invested if we're, if we move forward with it. So I think we need to be very conservative um, in in how we approach you know, this particular study.
And the the, I know we've talked about this, but the the new report decision to use the hundred year plus six, that that's a decision made for all projects within the report, or is that just their?
Just public infrastructure, but they can't apply that to private projects.
But any public infrastructure project going forward will.
Well, this is is assuming that, you know, essentially the flood flood level, you know, hundred year level um, will be six feet higher as a time one hundred. You know, and there are different ranges.
Six point eight feet to be percent, I mean, that's the.
Okay.
And is that an outlier, or do you have any sense of whether other communities of similar size, you know, Rainberry or Salisbury, are they using a similar number or?
Um, I I, no, I I don't know, and 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 that's a, that's a good question. I don't know what what the other communities are doing. Uh, you know, that conversation with city engineering, who was part of the decision-making process in in the report. Um, and, you know, he explained how they arrived at it, you know, who who was involved in the discussion. You know, and and my understanding is that one of the people involved in the discussion was, um, I guess initially skeptical of sea level rise. Um, but, you know, then in the end, in 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 the end, um, you know, they, you know, but to get, put out a consensus that um, that that was what they would run over.
I mean, that's true, because I'm not fully understanding, I mean, I read the report and had questions, and you obviously pick up on that with the hundred year flooding raises six point feet, and they go on further to say um, you'd have to raise the wellhead and all associated infrastructure eight point eight feet above the current ground surface. So that's to protect the equipment, so you could theoretically do that. Does it contaminate the water source?
Yeah, right.
It does.
Yeah.
The amount of flotsuits.
Well, yeah, and also increases the chance that the water you're withdrawing from the aquifer is.
Right, the 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 water, I mean, to me, you know, I only I only read through their report one time. But, you know, one of my takeaways was that, um, you know, their assumption is that the water is under the influence of what's of sea level, hence, you know, the river, all the time.
Yeah.
And and, you know, that's why I would love to have a discussion with with them and 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 have them clarify that. But it sounds like, you know, they they're, they believe that the aquifer is under the influence of of a river, which, you know, is entirely surprising, but but, you know, nobody had acknowledged.
Well, I think that they pointed out, Bob, there were some things that they pointed out in the Tate and Howard work that didn't completely establish, you know, the end of the um like stabilization.
That was a question back left.
Yeah.
At this particular point, they figure it's not under the influence of the river. But again, like we've mentioned before a couple of times, we build all this infrastructure, put the wells online, six months from now, we got a test. And find out, then we find out that it's under the influence of the river, then we have a big problem.
Yeah, so they're saying.
Really officially, but so we've been pumping six months, which to me makes no sense.
Well, so there, you you should read the the report, because they're saying that there's some flaws in the the study that that was done previously, that didn't, you know, so so I think that that is a question. Um, so, talking with Angus, our thought was to have um, somebody from Sampson be here at our next meeting, but we kind of wanted to give them some guidance on on how we, you know, they want six to the six feet or so that they prepare to discuss that. Um, but there were several things that were identified that were missing from from the original report. I would like to understand why DEP didn't pick up on those things, you know, if they were prepared. Um, it's so the ambient aquifer trend were not established. They're saying that sixty percent of the water withdrawn from the source is a result of induced infiltration from the river, based on the Tate and Howard um, work. Um, let's see.
I didn't get that impression from the original assessment.
Yeah, that that was their, you know, kind of extrapolation from the data that was was collected. So, um, you know, my thought is to have them onto the next meeting, but I just, if there's anything that we want clarification on, we can help provide that to them ahead of time. So we can have a good discussion with them.
So unfortunately, I did hear back from Sarah Ritter that the eighteenth is not a good date. And so it couldn't be that night.
All right.
Regarding the six feet, um, I I I would feel irresponsible to not be um, very conservative, because it isn't just twenty million dollars. And twenty million dollars is just twenty million dollars. But it isn't just twenty million dollars, it's what the community is banking its future on. And and so if in, you know, if in seventy five years the community is fully dependent upon a water source, and that water source is no, becomes non-viable, then the community has really, really, obviously, we'll all be long gone. Uh, we're at that point, we'll just, well, maybe not, it might be sticking around, good for you, I hope you have, it'll well pass, but we'll just be bad members. Um, because of, you know, because we weren't conservative.
Do you have any thoughts on this, Chris? On the on the sea level rise issue, which metric we use?
I don't understand which metric you would use, that's why I would defer to them in one way. Yeah, it's that the I.
Well, but no, we gave them the metric of.
Based on new report and and.
Right, they, they would use three feet, I think. Did you get the sense that they thought this was pretty conservative?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, but I could go back to Rick's point, you're going to be spending that kind of money, and climate change is pretty catastrophic at this point. To try and sort that out seventy or a hundred years down the road, you better be conservative.
So the problem, you know, the problem with the the consensus opinions regarding something like sea level rise is that is that, you know, there are consensus, and you end up going to the least common denominator, but, you know, the the least bad situation that you can get all people, convince all people to accept, after sign off on on the opinion. And, you know, so there's this recurring sequence that happens where climate change projections and the effects of climate change projections are made. And some number of years later, it's like, oh, we blew by that. Okay, so now there's a new new projection in process. And and by the time that gets accepted, and again, you get to the consensus again, you now blow by it again. And and that hasn't happened just once. You know, and and it's most likely going to continue to happen. Uh, you know, if you look at what's happening worldwide right now, it's all expected, you know, projected. Um, but it's happening sooner than than was expected.
And more frequently.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, didn't it say, over years ago, this property actually was fairly well flooded when it's been a huge flood?
Mother state.
The weather state flood, it was underwater.
Yeah, now, if we own the well field there, well, that contaminated the water.
Well, it's probably the well field based on if the if the hundred year flood plain was at the same level at that point, I think it's maybe been up once since then. But I think the requirement is that it's supposed to be two feet, the the wellhead is supposed to be two feet.
Yeah, that's the current.
Of the head, of the above the hundred year flood plain.
I'm saying it already has flood.
Right, 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 yeah, but I guess my point is it it probably would not have flooded up to the wellhead, because the wellhead would have been two feet above at the, at that time, hundred year flood.
But does it contaminate the water?
Yeah, I think there'd be more pressure on the aquifer, so.
Right, right, you know, so that.
What we've already experienced at once in the recent past, I don't see it getting improving, I guess.
Right.
So it sounds like we want to stick with the six feet. Is that accurate, or do you want to do something in between three and six? Like, there'd be no scientific explanation for that.
I don't, I don't have a basis to tell you which one to use, I'm not the expert, that's, you know, West Sampson. They say three feet, you go with that, I don't know if you're not comfortable with it.
Yeah. I'm thinking you want to take a six feet.
I I'm six feet, yeah, I I don't like it, but I'm comfortable with it.
Bob, you have any information?
I'll have to read that thing, I'm not, I mean, that's not the only site in town. There's a couple of others I want to look at. And we already have two holes in the ground with, I think we need to reexamine.
Okay.
Get that done.
That's the death property.
So, well, we still need to close the, you know, close this out, which I think they are planning on having a presentation, right Angus, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so potentially the first meeting in October?
Yeah, unless, yeah, unless, uh, you know, let's get our schedule changes, but.
Okay. So it it looks.
Yeah, I mean, the the, you know, you noticed, uh, obviously, this memo was one part of their contract. Their contract covers uh, more than this, it also covers, you know, the cost estimates. Um, and that was later in their contract, with the October first delivery date.
Yeah.
Um, I do think, obviously, this is, this is a big kind of threshold issue, the six feet, yes or no? Uh, I think if there's a way we can get them direction sooner than two meetings from now, even if that ends up being, uh, I don't know, a daytime meeting like Zoom, if we could get a forum available for that some Friday afternoon or something, just in the interest of, you know, we've put so much into getting it to this point.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I and I know, I know that you need that. You know, it would be easy for me to say stick with the six foot parameter, and I know what the results will be.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think to really make sure that uh, that board, uh, you know, really embraces that decision. Uh, and and I don't disagree with it.
Yeah, no, I I I think you should question that, you know, but um.
You'd have to have good reason to change it to the three, you know, to sit there.
Right, not just because it would be underwater, it would have to be like an objective.
You can fix any problem if you're backing for Angus.
Right. All right, so so are they just looking for comments on the report, or does there need to be a discussion about the the six feet? I'm I'm not clear on what the the meeting that we wanted to have with them.
Uh, basically, just just to uh, um, just so I'm not kind of the middleman on on like, I mean, I I told them, same thing I told you in terms of how the six feet was arrived at.
Yeah.
And so it's it's obviously extremely consequential and and would basically rule out the site. So if that is, uh, you know, if we stick with that, I just want to make sure you know, the board owns that and embraces that, because it may be, you know, questioned. So, you know, since the meeting that Rick, that you and I were part of last December was with, you know, a couple of people, it wasn't with the board, it was, and I think it's the best number that we have. Uh, and I think it's a very, very good to be conservative. Um, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, that you, you have, you know, the direct interaction with yourself as to whether, you know.
So would that change their um, scope, that they pull back on the work that they contracted to do if we decide this is not viable?
Uh, I didn't ask them that question specifically, I think if if we don't, yeah, if we stick with that forever, I think there there is a question, how how much further do we go, you know, incurring more cost if
Right.
if it essentially rules that side out.
So would you both be able to attend at any daytime Zoom? If we can work that out rather than.
Depends on the day, yeah.
You know, try to.
I think it's worth, I I think it's worth doing.
Yeah, because we're both a couple of dates, it'd be great.
Yeah, 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 we we can uh, get a couple of dates in the next, uh, I feel in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
And send them around tomorrow and try to get something on the calendar.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? I do think if you have a chance to go through, if you have any specific comments. I do think if you have a chance to go through, if you have any specific comments.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm gonna have to print this out, it's like, and actually, sit down.
Is anyone else like? Okay, I feel like it's really muddy. Anyway, I, I didn't know if it was the H.
You schedule a meeting, will you have the other commissioners involved too?
It would be a public, well, actually, I mean, it's, it's really, but I think it would be, I believe it would be a public meeting, I think if.
Well, I'm just saying, who would need the schedule so that they can be involved too?
Yeah, yeah, actually, that would have been a great thought if, uh, if the board or commissioners could, it'd be involved there.
Well, I want to.
Yeah. But it means the full board deserves to go.
Yeah, if you set a date, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right.
Um, all right, next item.
Okay, you said Mike has a copy of that?
He does, yeah, yeah, there was a draft emailed around, I wanna say. Two, two Thursdays ago. And then, uh, there was an updated draft sent, I think this past Thursday or Friday, Thursday or Friday. It was, it was a bad, and he received both of those directly.
Okay, all right, I'll give it again.
All right, so we need a vote to. Close the special accounting warrant. Um, that's decided, and then the next item is review of requests, specific warrant was. Would you want to make a motion to close?
Sure, I'll make a motion to close the county.
Second, further discussion.
You're closing the warrant, it's gonna be revealed.
Yes, that's the next item, I need, first you close the warrant.
So nothing else could be added, we can diminish from it.
Correct.
Unless, unless for some reason we decide we need to open it back up.
Just actually, on that basis, during, during discussion before we get it, so there are, uh. So what I sent around to you Friday, Jenny hadn't seen, so today she had a couple of suggestions that I think were good, I don't think they. Implicate closing or not, but I'll raise it now before you close it, just in case.
Yeah.
One is, uh, her recommendation would be on the laptops rather than having a free cash article to actually amend the I P budget to absorb those. Just from an accounting standpoint, which, which I agree with that, and then. The other, and this is a very minor thing, and I had let you know, but if we wanna be precise, it's, it's worth doing, which is the. Uh, under the board health budget, the landfill monitoring, uh, as you probably recall, it's, you know, we have a contract with someone that comes, does that. Their price went up fifty dollars a month, so that is gonna overspend that budget by six hundred dollars this year, so we're. I wasn't inclined to look at budget amendments, but since I, we did end up getting the newsletter last week on Whittier Tech. Said there's a budget amendment proposed, it would be very easy to add, to increase the steel landfill by six hundred dollars. So, I just want to say that before you close the warrant, so that I'm not bringing it up after you're closing in five minutes.
So that, that wasn't part of the.
No, no, that's something that.
Okay.
I have a little.
She could amend her motion to close the warrant by adding the steel by law.
Yeah, if you're inclined to, you know, the, yeah.
Let's just do it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think. If we're trying to be accurate.
We're gonna amend the budget, then it would just be the I P with your app.
Yeah, 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 the article wouldn't change, we, or we, we just expand, the article will change, but.
It wouldn't be a new one.
It would be a new one, yeah.
So we don't have to amend anything, we'll do it.
No.
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so did you make a motion?
Uh, yeah, my second motion, your second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? All right. So, um, before we start on item G. Um, the point of tonight is to decide which ones of these are on, it's not to say what in favor or not. So I would be inclined to just discuss or bring up ones that you either have questions on or you don't think should be on there.
Well, some I didn't even know enough about, so that's fine.
But, so if that's the case, I think we should have a little bit of a discussion about what our criteria are for. Allowing something to be on the warrant or not, I mean, it's kind of ambiguous, I know in the past. There was a feeling that you shouldn't have things on in the fall town meeting. You know, unless there was an emergency, so I just think as a board, we should decide what our criteria are to have a warrant article.
Okay, we can go through them, if there's anybody says, I don't think that should be on, then.
Yeah, we could do that, but I just want, like, what, based on what, what, what would you say?
I pretty much have my problem there.
Okay, so what, what kind of warrant article would you have issued?
I really don't, I think any of these should. No, I think towns should get to decide most of these things, I think you have the opportunity at the meeting, I'm in favor of almost anything.
Okay.
To discuss.
Anything that you would say is not appropriate to be on board, just in general. I can only think of one that the board voted against while I've been on, that was. Use of town funds to set up a marketing thing for the conservation by law. Because that wasn't appropriate. For those, yeah.
I mean, when I say that, I'm not, it doesn't mean I'm in favor of all these either, but I think, I think they're all fair to have the town discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, my thoughts in the past, and you know, this is, I guess, based on conversations with other people is that. Um, you know, if there's something that's a significant commitment for the town. And it can be reasonably foreseen that it makes sense. To, um. To hold it for an annual town meeting where you're likely to have higher participation. But, you know, what, what is significant, that's, that's a pretty.
Really fifty grand, I think on the floor, it's the biggest.
Yeah, and that's, and I'm, I'm assuming that's discussion, I'm, I'm probably gonna recommend that for spring, but I didn't wanna raise it for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
So, but, but, but just for the reason it would trigger capital, which is the whole thing.
Yeah, one thing I look at when I'm reviewing them is should this be in the operating budget, you know? Rather than. You know?
Yeah. Yeah, there are a couple of things here that probably should be.
Yeah.
Or should.
Could.
Could, could, and perhaps should be next spring, but based that, you know, if you look at the, um, basic interim thing. Kind of have to be now, if it's gonna, if the program is gonna happen next year because of one you have to advertise, if it was in the operating budget. Then the funds are going to be there, right, but, but they're not allocated yet, so, you know.
Okay, um, so having said that, are there any? That you either have questions on or, or don't think should be, I didn't see any that I don't think should be in there, I mean, did either of you?
No, like I said, I don't agree with all of them for sure, but I think they're all worthy of, of being presented.
Um, are there any that you have questions on?
Well, that's for all the future meetings, when we sit down and go through them.
All right, so you don't, you said something you didn't know, I don't know what they were for, so can you categorically say it should be on the warrant if you're not clear on what? Okay, all right. Rick, do you wanna just vote to keep them all on, or are there any that you?
I do think the fifty thousand, you know, I, I wanted to raise it, but I, you know. I don't, is now a good time, so, so this is one, the town had previously appropriated about nine thousand, one more than nine thousand to deal with the. Uh, se- uh, sewer pipe. This, this problematic, and so that's already funded through a prior article.
And it's nine thousand?
It was nine, between nine and ten, uh, I think it might have been part of one of the articles that Wayne did that had like three or four items, like a memo, it was like ninety-nine hundred, I think. Uh, which was what he thought it would cost to replace that structure pipe, so, you know, since that time, uh, so that funding is there, or we could just go ahead with that. Since that time, there have been a couple of things, one is there's been discussion of, you know. Flooring options of the annex, do we wanna try to think of that as more of a multi-use space or something like pickleball? So that's been floating around at different meetings, I'm not really part of that. But secondly, you know, talking to Brian, uh, you know, and just talking through the issues with this and the fact that suspect this tile is gonna need to be disposed of and so forth. He, he asked me, you know, if we're gonna do it, why don't we just do it all at once, I said, you know, that's a good question, let me talk to the board about that, so that's really why I wrote this up. Uh, not, and, and even if you think and we all think we should do, just do the whole floor. I might still prefer, let's do it in the spring. Just as, otherwise we're in a capital committee and it's not formally on the capital program and there's a lot of stuff. So even if it's a good idea, it might be a good idea to wait, I just thought since the, there was an opportunity to bring it up for discussion, that's why I did that.
So can the project, can the sewer line replacement wait until?
Yeah, it's waited this.
Is there any oven bringing it forward though right now, really?
I'm sorry?
Is there any oven bringing it forward?
Just if it goes to capital, because if we're gonna do that right, not only is it reactivating the committee and getting them meeting in September. Instead of the normal first meeting, it's more like November, uh, but secondly, it's not actually part of the capital program. So that means amending the capital program spreadsheet, not a big deal, but you add all that up, it's probably five or six hours of my time over the next. Month, which will detract from other stuff we're trying to do, so.
And in addition to utilizing the space, I know Wayne and I had talked about maybe. We're doing the walls, the wood paneling isn't great, or scheme and talk about A D A compliance on the stage, there is none. Um, so if, if we're gonna look at maybe a holistic look at what the annex needs in general might be.
Yeah, which case it could be a number of considerable, but if we're gonna do it, it probably makes sense. To do it as a whole project.
I think it does.
Yeah, especially if you have pavement, if you want to be, or if just a pipe.
Right, yeah.
So do you wanna take that off then?
The, the other one is, you know, I put in the thing about page school scan for your consideration. I am totally agnostic if that's worthwhile or not, so if it's not, I, there's no hard feelings, I. But I thought you should make that decision as to whether you wanna.
Which article?
The, the seventeen, the inter can of page school, I do think that could be of value, is it worth, you know?
Again, I have my opinions on it, but I think it should be presented at the town meeting, I mean, I see both sides of it, it would help to sell the project. You know, based on what people might see, we don't get into the school.
Yeah.
Uh, to me, it's a lot of money for something I don't need to know.
Right.
There'll be lots of debate, but I still think it, it should be on the warrant so that people can. Hear it on standard.
So we have a discussion with the finance committee and.
Yeah, go, go bet, you know? You know, I have a question I want, this is just the first I have. And it's just three of them, the mass bylaws.
Yeah.
For the stipends.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, six, seven, no, twenty-six, seven and eight.
Yes.
What's the question?
I'm trying to phrase it.
Oh, sorry.
Jim, cause he's sitting right there. It is town park, yeah, uh. It would seem to me that these positions should already have the certifications as part of their.
That's not the way certification.
You work at the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. So, so just for context, so.
So you're not gonna get certified if we didn't vote it, I'm, I'm just asking.
No, so the, the idea of certifications is, um, you, there are certifications, for example, with C M M C, which is the. Clerk requirement, you can't get it until you are a clerk for three years. Yeah, or similar, when I was a planner, that's, there's no statute, but you couldn't become a certified planner until you had five years of professional experience as a. Professional planner, so, but, but the real reason I brought these forward is really to basically codify what we're already doing. So when I wrote the offer letter for the chief assessor, uh, for the town clerk, for the assistant clerk, for the treasurer collector, all of whom have been hired under my, my oversight. I put in an incentive for them to get certification. Actually, it, the, the only person, the only employee that would be affected by this currently. Is the assistant sector, because that person predates me and did not have that in their offer letter. The others all are already getting a stipend.
It's all planned and anticipated.
Well, it's just not been under the statute, but it is, so, so this would kind of formalize that. Uh, and for going forward, it would, you know, kind of counts hands for that, but I think it's the right thing to do anyway. Uh, to recognize, you know, professional certifications, uh. But it would basically codify what, what I've been doing, you know, in the last five years, so.
Well, yes, but not, like I say, I think they all may or be.
Okay.
Addressed.
And then I think, uh, I don't wanna speak for Jenny, she's right here, but I think on the opioid one, I think we both felt like. We agree that makes sense, whether it happens this fall or next spring, like, isn't a huge deal to us, so if you're looking to thin things out. But it's all.
Particularly controversial.
No, it shouldn't be, it's really an accounting vehicle, so.
Yeah. We wanna keep Jenny happy. We wanna keep Jenny happy.
I wouldn't let you thin things out unnecessarily because take care of it in the fall, then the spring becomes thinner.
That's.
But that's not been the culture, the culture has been like very thin fall.
Yeah, yeah.
Under directors, you know, so.
Take care of it in the spring, put the hammer down then.
No, I mean, we can decide.
What Mike McCarron used to say, and, and he was absolutely right, it's the board's warrant.
Right.
So you really have total discretion.
That is true, regardless of what the convention was in the past.
Yeah. Okay.
Should do it right now.
All right, so, um.
The exception in article eleven?
Yeah. Do we, we need to make a vote on that, right? Chris, you wanna do that?
Make a motion to re- that, all the articles as presented, except for article number eleven, actually, we'll remove.
Further discussion?
So we understand one article is gonna change substantially, that's the one that will be put in the laptop, the, the word you place.
The budget.
Yeah, so that, that would actually be rolled into, uh. That's, uh, in, uh. Yes, sixteen, yeah, so sixteen would go away, would be rolled into four.
Okay.
And also article four would also be expanded to include, uh, the landfill miner. Uh, for six, six hundred dollars.
All right, further discussion? All there?
I.
So. And putting together the schedule for discussion with finance committee, I guess.
Yeah.
How, how do you organize these?
Well, it's gonna be, I, I almost called Rob today.
Yeah.
Uh, I did, because I was pressed to time him, I love talking with Rob, but the problem is it's always a forty-five minute call.
Yeah.
I enjoy some of the length, I enjoy talking with him, but it's never a short call, um. The way I've done it traditionally with prior chairs is I would sit with the chair and we would kind of sketch out. Um, you know, the dates based on really two factors, one is the availability of people to present. And the second is state of readiness, if things are like, all the backups tight and it's all there, let's just clear the decks. And for things like the water cut thing, I would work with the chair to say, let's put that on the latest date that you're comfortable with. To still give your committee time, but that gives, you know, a couple of, so for instance, I talked to Mark Marley today and I, you know, he was working at different cost estimates. And I said, that's when I'm gonna work with the chair to put late, uh, so, and I said, you know, he's probably got two weeks from today to come up with a really good number there. Uh, you know, if Rob says he wants to back up no later than whatever date, we'll do what we need to do to meet that, but it's, it's those two factors.
He also put it together based on how much conversation will be around issues so that the meetings didn't get really long.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, he did a great job, he pulled them all together, he got the, each packet like, I think, two weeks ahead, so we knew what was coming. On the next meeting, even though we didn't have the full backup.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
So then you and Rob will come up with a schedule for the whole, for all of the articles?
Yes.
And, okay, and so the next meeting is finance committee on Thursday, September fourteenth.
Right, yeah, so I'd be working with Rob, uh, uh, tomorrow or Thursday, unfortunately, tomorrow. But it's all meetings, but I might connect with him later in the day tomorrow, but.
It's gonna text me, he said he's out of town for the week, he'll be available tomorrow electronically.
Okay, all right, so yeah, well, I'll get, I'll certainly get in touch with him tomorrow, but okay, I will connect this in a speech now.
So, um. I, I mean, I wonder if it's possible when the thin com attends our meeting on the eighteenth, if we could have the lighter. Like a lighter load to that meeting, because we'll have our regular meeting in addition to that, I don't know, that's still.
Yeah, yeah.
Which date was that?
Uh, the fourteenth is thin com and then the eighteen.
Oh, the eighteen, okay, I thought you said the fourteenth would be lighter, but that's dedicated, okay, all right.
And so, we will all be able to attend these meetings, uh, you go.
Let's get it all, soon.
Great. If you can put in one other area. Yeah.
There's some keys here, I've got this, um, chair.
Oh.
If this were a nice guy, then why? There you go.
Thanks, Jen.
Wonder how long they've been there?
Nice.
See, Jen?
Hi.
These are cool. These are cool.
I know we already voted, I just wanna ask a question to the articles. Uh number twelve, we need to study the three thirty main street.
Yeah.
It's three, it's not three thirty, it's like that whole area.
Three thirties.
Yeah.
And actually, we have a resident, so so uh this is. Uh we're we're expecting a proposed scope and budget by the end of the week, and Potts and Witten, they've been our uh stormwater consultant. On a couple of different things over the last uh three or four years, so very, very good. Uh. And I had had a call with Laura Kennedy, who's been the project manager, uh about two weeks ago on a different topic. Which is their continuing work on basically getting all of our bylaws and planning board regs internally consistent, because they're they're still. We're still not quite there, and while I had her on the line, it was fresh in minds what was going on with Main Street and the uh. Uh significant issues, and so I described the situation to her, we spent a while talking about it and uh. You know, I explained one of the challenges being it's really, you know, the water seems to be coming from private property and on the private property. At at some point, it does come into public infrastructure, there are concerns there, but uh but that some of the issues, you know, really aren't. Affecting town infrastructure, but it's obviously an issue of public concern and town concern. Uh and she said they do have, you know, at times they're engaged to do basically a stormwater drainage study of a defined geographic area. What's the uh volumes of stormwater, what what kind of infrastructure would you need to manage that type of. Volume and is it there, and to make recommendations on where improvements may be needed. In this case, where the land is is really almost entirely private ownership, it wouldn't be incumbent on the town to make those improvements. But it seems to me this could be uh, you know, an investment the town could make to help. You know, advance public understanding of what would need to happen there, and that who would do that and fixing it, that's really a different thing. So I I think it's something that when the time comes and and when there's a scope in front of you, cause I've described it generally, but when. When we have something uh rip, or should when it'll outline exactly what they would do. It's something the board should think hard about, I think it's a a good idea to look at it, that's why I initiated it, but. It is a different type of issue in terms of spending. Uh you know, public money to study the drainage patterns in a larger private area.
That's my concern.
But it is kind of like a threshold issue, uh so I think if if you're, you know, if you do start going down that road, we can expect there are. Other areas in town that have periodic drainage, you know, concerns, so. One thing, you know, we later tonight we'll talk about priorities, one of the things I've had on my list for five years. Is to have a better understanding and better documentation of our existing stormwater infrastructure, that's been on my list for years. We're we're advancing that, you know, somewhat with a regular road study, but that's just one area. Uh and uh. So for me, this kind of thing does fit in nicely with the kind of thing the town can do, but it is a different type of. Service than we provided, we're not required certainly to do it, so it is something to think, think hard about.
I think what makes it a little bit unique is that the discharge into the street is is causing a public safety. Did you look at the video?
I saw it the day of, when it happened the two times, actually, the first time.
It's happened three times.
Well, I saw the first, the first three times, it was right up, but that doesn't mean. That the town should be spending the money on private property, that that's a very.
Right.
Uh concerning.
Well, in terms of that infrastructure, that that is, that wouldn't be legal. Uh in terms of studying the area, that's, it's certainly legal, it's, but it is like a different type of thing.
Discuss it on time, I guess, but I didn't have a lot of.
No, it's well worth it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a new, new direction. But I mean, you know, the the water main was also undermined by this, you know, to me DOT is the one that needs to. Address this, I don't think the drainage is adequate, you know, they tied into the drainage system without making sure it was adequate first.
But now you got a private property owner in the state, again, it's, we're getting caught in the middle at that point. And spending taxpayers' money, and that, how far down the road do you go with that, too, become the next issue? I think it's a very dicey proposition to jump into.
Yeah. I think it's gonna become more common, unfortunately, but.
Yeah.
Well, my brother washed out pretty nice, too, when.
When you're downhill, so you're the problem. Yeah, I know, that's the problem.
Rick, do you have any thoughts on this before?
Um. Yeah, you know, I'm a little concerned about um opening a somewhat of a Pandora's box. But I I think there is public interest. A similar situation with the church on Main Street, they needed uh money for historic renovation, they were looking for CPC funds. Ten years ago and didn't get a lot of support at town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, spending towns money on private benches. It's it's the town impact on public infrastructure, which it, it should though, that's, I mean, you could almost go back and say that it's a responsibility of. Either the state or the property owners. Bylaws, you can't discharge whatever. Well, what we're looking, what what this proposal to do is this, is to. Um especially to analyze the drainage.
Just from the town.
Right, but not to design or develop.
I, I, we'll get to it later.
Um Ann, did you have anything you wanted to to add to the conversation?
I I there, yeah, I guess, I guess we're um, we are conscious that the. Uh the the key thing we are, we're conscious of, this has impacted, um I think quite a lot of houses down the road, I will be. Approaching them, I have approached some of them, this is, it's approached the rental property, which is flooded, it it impacted the. The garage, it's gonna impact, was I think this is gonna get worse, it's gonna impact the undermine the road. It's gonna also undermine the waters, the water drain that we had before at the bottom. It's undermined, there are sinkholes at another house down the road. And there's another property up the road from us, which has also got property uh property issues, and I think. The the onus is really on MassDOT, increasing and putting in appropriate. Um uh sewage drainage systems, uh storm stormwater systems, so it's really around in. Providing them with the the data to indicate that what they have is inadequate, they have a one-foot pipe. That goes halfway down the road and crosses our road and doesn't go down the road, and they then have a very small pipe. At the bottom of the road with some more, where more water collects when everything overflows, and it basically is causing a backflow in our, in our. Stream that is then causing a whole excessive amount of flooding, so. We would be really appreciative if the cap town could actually consider this, because this is, this is going to get worse. And I think to your point, it's gonna have an impact on the town, either by undermining the main water supply. And making that collapse, or making the road collapse at some particular point. Um but our neighbors are all being impacted, and it's really a MassDOT problem.
Okay, so we we voted to include it on the warrant, um so when it's discussed. Uh the finance committee and the select board will vote whether they favor it or approve it or not, and we'll make sure you are aware when that. Here in this, if you'd like to participate at that time.
We would very much like to to do that, what we'll try to do is encourage our neighbors, we have reached out to um the senator. Who has agreed to um facilitate a freeway discussions between our neighbors, yourself and MassDOT, but the onus is really on MassDOT. And them doing, then they have the money, they have the resources, they have the uh the capabilities to do this, not the town, so we we would. We would greatly appreciate the town's support in emphasizing to MassDOT that it's their problem.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um next item, consideration of draft ALAT fund form of application. So I had incorporated the changes we discussed the last time, this was on the general. Um that was, you know, being at least eighteen years, uh living here for more than a year. Um this was all just in the first page, the. So if we could approve this and then, you know, put this on the webpage, that's, you know, they will.
Approve the changes?
What's that?
Can we make changes?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't approved last time.
No, we talked about changes, and I incorporated the changes we talked about last time, do you have more changes now?
Well, yeah, with the things we talked about, nothing, it was surprising, I think.
Okay.
Um the select board may choose to instead issue a grant to the applicant. I think we said the threshold was for anything under five thousand dollars. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and then I don't know, I thought we.
We we talked about it, but I my recollection was we left that out because um. But I I'm fine with adding that, Rick, do you have any?
Well, I don't want people to think they can come in and ask to get a ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollar grant. Well, it says, it it, you know, it says the select board may choose to give them the answer. Or. Well, no, I just sort of set parameters so their expectation could be realistic, I guess. I don't, it, I'm not hard on that, it's just something I thought we talked about. Um and then the other thing, one of the attorneys. At one point was talking about uh any maximum amount, it could be a loan, I don't know. Uh that has to be set in there or not. I I guess my personal thing that we should set limits and that we should. I had noticed. Right, it's kind of word, but we should assume that that a select board will be responsible.
Maximum flexibility.
Alright, again, it's very open-ended still, and that's probably the way you wanted, I guess, you know. Um the only other, this is something I would request. Statement applicants must be committed to the repayments of the loan, like that underline or bold or something like that. Just in case we ever get an applicant who wasn't committed to that or not. Not that it would happen, but just so there were.
So do we need an additional language or just?
No, just all that, I'll underline one or the other, I think that's the the key statement in there, that this is not a gift, it's, you have to be committed to the repayment if you're going to request. Funds.
Okay.
I have a minor wording issue, um and maybe I'm picking, maybe I'm not, under purpose.
Yeah.
Where it says the purpose of the ALAT fund is providing, strikes me that should be, is to provide.
What kind of thing?
Just dramatically, I think, was.
Jim, are you um maybe, okay, I don't have that more. And did we want to put the five thousand in here?
No, you can leave it there, I get the both sides of that one, but qualified. Again, if ideas that might be enough to change, so if you.
And then the underline, you know, you wanna underline or bold, you can choose.
Bold capital and not a line. I might as well let that all slide away, I would just bold.
Okay.
Uh a- actually, I just, so select man should be uh select. Or no, it's. Well.
No, that was the direction.
It was, but but.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
Does it, is it singular or plural? Uh I believe it's select man.
Well, individual, so you guys, right, man.
It's the individual, so when I put on that, it's like man. No, I know, I know, but but in this context, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I said select.
Oh, uh line three on the right of this page, it says uh.
Under three, it's it's select men, yeah, but the the.
It seems like it should be select man.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, right, yeah. Select, right. Oh, right, that makes sense. Oh, yeah, it's like these select men.
You know, but I think in the the actual source documents.
Maybe let it, let it plural, so that or or in quotes, so people know it it's uh.
Just say select.
No, I I think it, yeah, I don't.
That's the, I think that's the language directed from the well, so.
Yeah. So I'll I'll leave that up to you, Jim.
So maybe you should put, you know, okay, uh.
Quotes?
Yeah, quotes or some something it became that is. Yeah, sick, yeah, well, it it could be uh with the direction that the select board. No, I think sick is the right way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
But it I, it would be worth a check, do you have the source documents, just to make sure that I didn't just misread it? Or I can actually look that up, you know. Chris, what are you laughing at?
I, I cannot look it up, but I do, okay.
I I have that all.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of success, but we're getting grammar and getting everything right and. It was a, an enduring document.
A hundred years, we'll check on it.
Alright, any, anything else on the questions, are they all done?
Yeah, they're done.
Okay, I did add the signature block, cause that was. Alright.
Thanks, Wendy, for 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 taking the lead, I think this is years that we're doing, so it's really to your credit that she made it happen, thank you.
So do we wanna, what kind of publicity do we will have, software, just?
Uh initially, I think let's create a landing page on the website, uh that presumably under the select board page. So we can, we can create a new page, fill that out with some tech, uh add this, you know, maybe we put. All this on the page, but it would be repeated in the document you download, so let's fill out a page, and unless we feel like we have a page that we really all think looks great. Then we could do like a news announcement.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Motion to approve it?
We need them, maybe motion?
I think you just made one, I thought.
Alright, go on, Sarah, hi.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
Well, it's not the vote. Alright.
Well, I got scrunched one, I made a motion for something I didn't want. Well, sometimes you just gotta get moving along, right?
Alright, um. So we on the minutes?
No, I just thought in there, manager, town manager, right, in the.
Oh, okay, so I do actually have some stuff on that, but but uh. Do we wanna maybe clear the decks of everything else and then come back to that, but but I did put together something, great.
Alright, so I'm Jay Minutes.
Yeah.
On the attendees, um Patricia Reeser, she wasn't attending as a community preservation committee representative, she just happened. To be something else, and then say, yeah. She spoke, but that's what, not when she was there, she was there for the Ash Street thing.
Can I ask a favor? My computer is working right now.
Yeah.
At the moment, can I just say the things that I have on here? It could crack out any second now. Um uh okay, under C, presentations from invasive species interns. Um uh now, I haven't listened to the recording, but just a couple lines, the interns, where it says who spent. I think somewhere, I think at that point, we should say the names of the interns, cause I think they did introduce themselves.
I missed at the beginning of the days.
And then further down on maybe the eighth line down from there, it says Jennings queried the women. I think I should read the interns.
That sounds, that sounds like.
Um and was also determined that going forward, that, that going forward, that. It was also determined that going forward, the town manager, you take out the second that, um. I'm sorry, that's still I have C, sorry. Yeah, still I have Cs, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I, boy, I, my apologies, Jim, but I was actually under. D A Conservation Commission, third line down, starts to also determine that going forward, that, second, that doesn't need to be there. Um uh the commission will wish, then, couple more lines down, the commission wished higher as part of the future goal goals. Soon full-time land steward. Yeah, 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 okay, so seasonal land stewards.
And I don't, we talked about combining the open space committee and conservation commission.
Yeah.
No.
Um.
So I would just delete that.
Yeah.
After stewards, I said, send.
Uh then uh, let me see, then a couple, four more lines down. Jennings stated the commission would soon be beneficiary of, maybe that was what it was phrased, but would.
But they're not the only one.
Right, I think what he meant, I'm guessing what Angus meant was would soon benefit from the second. A renovated second floor hearing room, um nobody was willing to run second.
They're not just doing it for the. They're not just doing it for the first.
For a clear defined usage for the wetland fund. And is the wetland fund supposed to be capitalized? It sounds like a proper name to me.
It's not the actual name of it.
Okay, okay, so, um, well, fine with that benefits. Uh, then under E. About fifteen lines down, starts with six, capitalized six. Six, the zoom is debating the continued regrading. Uh, with a D instead of a T and no hyphen. Continued regrading of the, of the gravel portion which occurs at large expense to the town. I know these are grammar things, but they. Uh, they.
Great.
And then the next page. Still under the, and radar, and radar control, I think it's, um, radar. Um, monitoring, yeah, just, yeah, uh, monitoring and display draft. It's not actually controlling anything. But the chief of service of the town would not be. Responding communities for what were answered, but the chief of service of the town would not be. Doing that. The beer not to be. So I'll be wanting to phrase, I think it's gonna be something that would have to be, and then I think this is my last, my last note. Under, um, J. It's a town manager. A town moderator can authorize longer iterations. I think it's a town. Yeah, I do J under a couple of here, which consider, and then a fifth line down, which is a town moderator, I think is supposed to be town manager. It'd be a lot more about that, but, yeah, right, right. Um, okay.
Okay, all right, can we go back to the top? Under item B, small b, um. That, that should not be in there. It was on the agenda, but then I realized that it. It didn't, um, it wasn't relevant.
Yeah, that's the, the no motion, maybe we'd have to do anything, so.
Yeah, but I just, um, I don't know. No. They, they were already pointed by their boards. Next one is on item D.
Oh, under, uh, B sub C, uh, where it's like. Wait, is it item B E? Oh, N B E, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Were you again?
Um.
Yeah.
Item D B.
D B.
Um, so this is the whole discussion about CPC projects. I, I don't know if the wording there is not, um. Regardless of substance of shift of eligibility, and that's not, um, so. Let me write a sentence.
Sure.
Sorry, and send it to you.
No. I have a question on that. I've, I was too. That really never got resolved.
Well, it, it has been resolved. It was discussed at the meeting that she was at, so I'm not sure. It did get resolved. I mean, that's the, the function of the CPC to approve. Project or deny them, and then if they're approved, they go to town.
Based on what? Based on their determination or based on it ticked off all the boxes?
Based on their determination.
Okay, and I, I don't think that that was clear at the end of it. I think Patricia seemed frustrated.
Well, I brought it up at the CPC meeting after that, and everybody there had the same opinion that I had.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be something that, that complies with everything, but is distasteful to the town, and they should have that latitude to. Not accept it based on that. I'm just making it feel a little clear, okay?
Thank you. All right, um, oh.
Yeah, I did. Just went flat on her, it came back.
Okay, it came back.
My paper did, it stayed good.
Okay, on item E, Jim, the first sentence, the information that wasn't state official, that was N P C. The, uh, district transportation coordinator and the most titles. Um, and the third sentence, furthermore, the officials suggested better transition between paving gravel sections of the road. Maybe it should say better, suggested that there be a better transition. That, um, so, I guess it's not really relevant, and probably strike that sounds. I, I guess the point of that was the speed on the paved surface was higher than gravel, and so I don't know that transition is the right word. Uh, and then the final on that page, I don't think we said we wanna let the road degrade. That was brought up at the fish and wildlife meeting as well, and, um. We don't want the red road to degrade so that it's not safe.
No, and this is what I've had my worry with, we were missing.
Yeah.
My understanding is we agreed to let the road rut out until the police, to the point where the police chief and the DPW. Decides that there has and it needs to be regraded.
Yeah, I think that's better.
To that point, with, with the determination by those two parties.
Yeah.
And it's working marvelously.
Yeah.
Isn't it beautiful?
Especially bad coming from Newbury this way.
It is, that's the word.
How fast would the average taxi go on that?
Yeah, I, I drive like a whole man.
Yes.
But it works, it's a low tech.
Oh, gosh, yeah, if you're wearing dumbos now, you're paid for it.
All right, item G, third sentence down from the end, Reed suggested drafting revised scope and resubmitting. I, I would just strike that, I don't think.
Sorry, which item was that?
Uh, item G. Uh, start three, suggested drafting revised scope and resubmitting. I don't think I said that. And item J, rather than saying the room found existing five days, I would just say the board. I mean, there was a discussion in the room, Rob was there, but I mean, it's good.
Doesn't matter if Rob was thinking, no.
Yeah. And on item M. Um, this is the grant agreement. We just approved it. It had already gone through, um, review by K P Law. Actually, they drafted it, so we can just strike following examination. By town council. So I'm not sure, and I can see the last sentence, I'm not sure that's accurate. An increase in unneeded revenue. Yeah, I guess that, to say that, um, the numbers highlighting mistakes made by the board, I think I probably don't wanna say that. I don't know if there's a way to soften that.
Yeah, that's, I, I remember the discussion. And, uh, yeah, I, I think that's, that's a little more pointed than.
I was asleep at that point.
All right, you didn't get all your comments in?
And, uh, I V sub D, the vote, um, I didn't abstain, I voted yes. To put me, myself on the best of all the committee.
Right. Motion to approve the minutes as amended, right? I was in favor, all right.
Hi. Hopeful lady.
All right, I think you still wanna take over?
Yeah, uh, so I can show where.
No, I gotta go back to I two.
Yep, yep. Uh, so item K, I know I have. So, so this is on the draft water rate study, you know, I have, I definitely some thought that the, how it could be approved. I don't have them clear in my head, and I, uh, I mean, I could offer a couple of things, but, uh. We, I'll just, you know, I, I was, I was really hoping for something that would, in, instead of just kind of like. Updating your existing structure, I was, I was hoping for something that would dig into some of the more policy questions that underline the rate structure, such as, uh. Uh, the threshold for the conservation rate, for instance, is quite high. In West Newbury, well, with some other towns, and, and I would, I would have hoped for something that would have presented things like that to the water commission. Uh, is that, uh, you know, why you set it one. Level or another, how many customers would be affected, if, for instance, if you lower that conservation rate, how much might additional revenue might that yield? Another thing that, you know, I've been asking about for five years, the development charge, and I've been told again and again. Oh, it's, it's fine, it's what it should be. I would have looked at the consultant and say, is that. The market for what we charge, it's, it seems a little low to me. Maybe that's because when I was in Wethburn, it was much higher. And as the director of land use management, I got a lot of the creep from the builders who hated it, but. It was there for a reason. It was based on a, a study, and it was basically new people tying in. Paying their share of the input, you know, the capital cost, which they hadn't paid into, because they haven't lived in town ten or fifteen years, but the. I guess there are a lot of things that, that I was really hoping this rate study would put on the table as questions. Water commission to grapple with as to how they wanna structure their rates. Uh, you know, whether you have, uh, just a single rate, or whether you have a usage rate and a capital rate, some towns do that. And, uh, you know, I think it, I was, I was disappointed that it didn't seem to really engage with those things. Uh, and it didn't, uh, you know, I felt, you know, I definitely felt like, um. I mean, when. I'm, I'm kind of glaring here is that the baseline budget that they used. Uh, this is on page seventy-two of the pack, or page four of the rate study. Uh, the F Y twenty-four operating budget of one million, one ten, well, the approved operating budget, budget was a million sixty-two. So that's, you know, fifty-eight thousand dollars less. Yet that was the basis of their whole study, and I don't know where that number came from.
Yeah.
That's not actually, it was approved, it's, so it's kind of like. And, you know, we talked about this a while back in a different meeting of. When you see, actually, I think it was the water commission meeting that, that Rick and Chris were at. When you see a number that's wrong, it starts to make you question everything else, like, if that's wrong, what else are we not noticing? Uh, but I think that was quite glaring, that it used the incorrect number as the F Y twenty-four operating budget. There were a couple of references to where, you know, to how our rates. Compare to neighboring or nearby communities, but it doesn't give any data. It doesn't give any appendix of what are the rates? We have, I have an Excel spreadsheet with that information, but I don't wanna be the definitive source on that. I'd like the consultant to be the definitive source. Good, because the numbers I have have been from different sources over the last few years. Who knows, maybe. Middleton changed their rates two weeks ago, and I don't know that. I'm not paid to know that. I've just, to me, it's, it's good enough for like my desktop to have a. Benchmark, but I would like to have something from the consultant that you can rely on to say what actually are the rates? And ours are high, or ours are well, or ours are right in the mix. So in general, I was, you know, very disappointed with by it.
Yeah. I am as well. I, I think it, uh, you know, a glaring omission is the development of a water supply, I mean. I mean, because the whole point of projecting forward is, you know, how are we gonna pay for this? I mean, they didn't even mention it. Um, I, I do think, you know, talking about the neighboring towns, the whole unit issue still needs to be resolved. You know, because you can't easily compare our, it's, uh, towns with different expressed, um, other wider comment, that's different. Um, on the projected budgets, if that baseline number's wrong, I don't know where they came up with the increases, the four percent for this, two percent for that. I mean, is that industry standard? If it is, they should say that, but I, I mean, it seems really arbitrary to me.
Right, well, and it's also, it struck me that I did have, I did receive a couple of calls, uh, you know, from the, you know, primary consultant on this. Uh, the signatory, and I think we've spoken upon at least twice, maybe three times, one of those calls was probably almost an hour. They were all somewhat, you know, they were two-minute calls, they were somewhat substantive calls. I wasn't asked about any of that, um, you know, in terms of the assumptions on, on annual cost of living increase or that kind of thing. So if they are using a industry standard, they should cite it.
Yeah.
But also, why would they use that instead of asking?
The town.
Question, it just seems very, like, it wasn't taken as seriously as we're taking it.
It was just like a boilerplate of the job.
That's what it felt like, yeah.
Um, so what, where do we go from here? I mean, did you have comments on that? Anything you want? If, if we're gonna have a conversation with them, we could provide.
Is this the one where the person?
Yeah.
Asked and get the latest.
So that's why you're getting it. You're not getting it.
No, we paid full price for it.
I'm not saying that, but the point is, the person was gonna do it, didn't do it. This is somebody else pulled it together, and they're throwing it at you in open sticks.
Well, if they were not competent, they should have assigned it to a subcontractor instead of doing it themselves. I mean, really, I don't, I don't see that as an out.
Well, no, it's not an out, it's an explanation.
It's not even an explanation. I was not stretching it.
So the two things, and one was from the previous meeting, was the threshold on the high utilization. I think that's gotta get adjusted. Both the gallonage and the rate. Uh, that would make a huge difference in increasing their revenues. And then the other thing, the conclusion recommendation was, you know, that. Current structure is not significant to meet their year-end operating budget, that's. Pretty cool. Uh, but yeah, if it's missing, I know Rob, I think, wasn't he saying he could do, they would be interested, that maybe the thin cocks issue is something. I'm not sure if I can, after, if you're gonna get much better. Well, give it a try.
No, I can probably, right?
Yeah, it would have been, it would be interesting to, sort of, you know, philosophically, just, you know, the simple table one, just the usage rate. What, when you're semi-annual base charge, what are you trying to accomplish? And when you're gallonage rate, what are you trying to accomplish? Um, you know, would it make sense? I, I just, I would be interested to hear a discussion of it, and I think it could have been in here, you know. Why is seventy dollars a way number? Would it, seventy dollars pay your fixed costs for the system? Probably not. But would it make sense that a semi-annual base charge actually pays? You know, distributed over all the, all the, the customers pays for fixed costs? And, and that the variable costs are the gallonage are paid for by gallonage? Could maybe that would be safer to do it that way? In terms of making sure that you're, you know, as usage fluctuates, that you don't undershoot or grossly overshoot. That make sense?
Yeah.
I know in, in a lot of U T O, well, I shouldn't say a lot, I, it. So up and, up and hand in our sewer rate, we had a, um. A capital charge and usage charge.
Yeah.
Capital charge was just like you said, same for everybody. And. I, well.
You don't.
We don't know, but you would assume so, yeah. Uh, but one of the advantages, it gives the customer a, a sense that some of their money is going toward debt service, uh. I don't know if you could set it up that any, let's say they, they, you know, could they set it up? Where a certain amount's automatically going into stabilization instead of, and the revenue is probably not, because that's not necessarily appropriate, but.
So is the water department planning of following up with them, or is this just what we were gonna have?
Well, it's Mark draft, I think, uh, you know, I would certainly. Tell, uh, you know, and I can, I can tell Mark that they shouldn't be put through invoice to payment until it's accepted as a final report. And I think if, if we collectively have comments, I think if we can give them. You know, hey, we'll get you our comments over the next, you know, some finite, you know, not. A month, but over a reasonable period of time, if we can consolidate our thoughts and. Get them some well-formulated comments, I would think the water commission would. Wanna end up with a better report than this. At, at a minimum, they've gotta certainly fix that. Errors, the operating standards, that's a really glaring issue. That's gotta run through all of their numbers.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's kind of everything else.
So what would you think would be a good timeline for us to, should we just get comments to you so that you can? Or write something, or?
Uh, yeah, that'd be fine.
Did you have a, Mark, Marlowe about this previously, you don't through?
Did you have a part, Marlo, about this previously gone through?
Uh, not, we haven't gone through it together in, in any detail. Uh, I mean, we, we talk almost every day and he's aware that we're, we're looking at it.
But I'm, yeah, meeting I attended, you guys were gonna get together.
Oh, no, we met to go through the hydraulic study. Me, Bob and Mark met and we spent like. An hour and a quarter going through that, because I had prepared detailed markups to that, but I haven't, I haven't done that here. I just missed them. Markup the, you know, and then.
So I think it was an update on the meeting with the mayor?
Yeah, we met, uh, last Monday and, uh. I looked to myself and Mark and Rick. And, uh. The mayor and, uh, you know, the, the water superintendent, city engineer, their, uh, D P I director Wayne, his deputy. Uh, the mayor's chief of staff, you know, all sitting around a big square table. And, uh, we only had an hour, but it, it was. Enough time. We touched on a lot of different things. We didn't go into, you know, great detail on things, but I felt like it was a good discussion of setting the table for. Uh, more detailed discussions to come on everything from. Uh. You know, the pipeline they did agree to come to, if it works for us, to our next meeting, present the project on the need team.
Okay.
Which I know you had concerns about never working with Western San Jose, but since they can't do that.
Yeah.
You know, I think we should go ahead and confirm that. Uh, I think they understand the importance of having a public presentation of this. And understanding that it is, uh, uh, still a work in progress and they have more questions than answers, but that they, they need to. You know, extend that courtesy to us and to the residents to. To put something formally on the table before they go through, uh, you know, things like drill and test, boring tests, which. They do intend to re-activate their request for termination with the ability to come come. Like they, they, they're not gonna do that. Discussion with us. You know, uh, I, it was, you know, generally cordial. Uh, I do think that. It's gonna be really hard to get their attention on some of the things that we want, uh, to really be dealing with in a serious way like rates and the M O U. It just, I don't know, Rick, what your thoughts were, but it just, it's, it's so fragmented. It's interesting when that.
Yeah.
You know, water, D P S, the mayor's office, the water sewer commission, which wasn't, wasn't represented at the meeting, but would. They, they didn't seem to have no for sure, but they did seem to think that they, that the mayor. For a new M O U, the mayor would be a signatory, would be the authorization of council. That's the same thing we saw with the bridge M O U. Like that the water sewer commission would also be a signatory. That was Andrew Levine's recommendation. It didn't seem like they'd like talk to council about that. But I think our assumption should be that basically the mayor, council and water sewer commissioner are all gonna be to agree. It, it seems like. If we're gonna make that happen, well, it's just, it's gonna take an enormous sustain and effort on our part. It's like pushing a, a rope, as they say, this is, uh, I don't know, Rick, what you're.
Well, I mean, it kind of strikes me that we need to pick our one or two most important issues and. As, as. Closely as we can, always couple it in conversation when we're talking about the issues that are most important to that. Um, and I think it's probably the pipeline. So I, I don't mean that one is contingent upon the other, but. It needs to be clear that both are, to me, it seems that they, it needs to be clear what our most important issues are in conversation. Uh, every time we have a conversation. So, you know, if they want to talk a list about pipeline, that's great. I think it's a great idea. I think it's important, but. You know, they need to be continually reminded of what's important to us. I thought it was just good that we, we did pretty much get everything on the table. At least, you know, before, uh, uh, for an initial mention. Um, you know, with. With the exception of their, you know, water and sewer commission with everybody in the room, you know, everybody did.
Yeah, we talked about the dam elevation project. There's, there's, since that time, there's been a. Uh, daytime meeting scheduled for next week on that. Uh, so Mark will be part of that. Michelle will be part of that. Uh. So I think that's overdue. I mean, we've talked about, you know, having that meeting back in January. Uh. But we know they have their staffing issues.
It was a good start, you know, I, I thought it was, you know.
Yeah. One question I had was, was that memo that, you know, we, we had the, uh. Memo for Vibria. I then converted that just a little bit. Uh, is that modified version? Suitable for sharing?
I think so. I mean, wasn't that the intent?
I think so. Well, we provided the water commission, uh, and, and they seemed to affirm, uh, you know, fairly. Even, they seemed to accurately reflect their point of view as well. Uh.
What do you think, Rick and Chris, if that ran through by time? Or would you need to look at it?
I have to see it again.
Okay, oh, what I'll do, I'll send that around tomorrow, because I, I debated whether to put it in the pack and I obviously decided not to, but. You know, we, we collectively, you know, it was before, uh, Chris, you were on the board, but, you know, both this board and the FinCom. You know, in my office, we, we all put a lot of thought into it. I think it's very good in terms of setting out our. What we would need to see and what we want to see. Uh, I don't think we'd lose anything by just saying, hey, this is our starting point.
So, so if you sign it out tomorrow.
I'll say it to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So can we have, can we? Um. Give Angus to go ahead to. To distribute it as appropriate, um. Absent any nays. Yeah.
But I mean, to your point a minute ago, Rick, should we, is that gonna overload them? It's like prepaid as long. And, or, or should we really winnow that down to like? The need to have and the. Wanna, and, and there's things in there, for instance, like the idea of a surf, surface water protection by law. That's not something we can commit to. That's a town meeting vote and I, and I think the position we've set out is that we. Uh, in the context of an overall agreement. We'd be prepared to bring it to town meeting.
But that's why I, I, I think for somebody in a city form of government, they, they won't understand what that means unless we say specifically. This will require, you know, approval by county.
Yeah. So I think we might want to, right, even if we are comfortable sharing like the substance of everything in there, I think the way we frame it, we might wanna. You know, tighten it up a little bit just so it doesn't, you know, just so it gets, gets the attention it needs.
Yeah. I, I just think it makes sense. It, it hits all points.
It does.
And so the sooner it's available to be used. I, I think better.
All right. And, and that's very timely with, with, you know, them coming in the next meeting. So I'll send that around tomorrow. And then, uh, if anyone has any thoughts on it, you know, let me know in the next week and a half, but, uh. Maybe for even for the meeting on the eighteenth, maybe we can convert that into, I don't know, a more sustained. Live or whole points or something, but it is, it's a good document.
Well, you know, so Newburgh report is here on the eighteenth, although. The meeting will not specifically be about that. It would be a useful reference document.
Yeah.
Have if we. You know, if, if it is useful at the time.
Good. Uh, item M, just FYI, just going on in the background, it has mitigation plan. Uh, item N, we talked about a little bit earlier. Uh, I do think, as I said briefly, at the beginning of the meeting. You know, that, that high balance and free cash is obviously gonna, you know, just. Reintroduce the question of how much is too much and. Should we put, you know, should, should we put some of that to a tax relief or should we put that for capital? Uh.
What was the, um, I don't recall where we're like, here for free cash?
Uh, it's, if you look on page eighty eight, it's all, it's a flat. Yeah, yeah.
The first time I actually can have what Chris paid him. What makes this gotten weird? That includes the free cash, but that, that.
Uh, once it is. If, if free cash is appropriated at the spring town meeting, it does not show up at the end of that fifth year because there's no longer free. It's now encumbered, kind of spoken for, so. This is all unencumbered. Uh, all right, item O, just a town offender report. Any, any questions on that? And then item B. So this was really interesting, this, uh, notice from Kentucky on that, on that. And so, uh, basically they borrowed more. Than was needed, which is not unexpected when Greg Obrak did the borrowing four years ago, three years ago. He, he talked to each of. Uh, me and the other two town administrators to say. You know, should he borrow a whole amount, knowing that it might be more than they need? And he was very clear with us at the time that if we end up with more than we need, it is eligible. For use for other capital projects. Uh, and he decided that district decided to, to go ahead and borrow the full amount. Because interest rates were so good and that the three pounds fell, you know, there's, if we get money back, there are going to be. Purposes that we'll need it for. So. I, I don't think I put it in the packet, but I did correspond with him and with, uh, you know, my counterparts. The advice that he's given me is that this can be expended without further appropriation. I'm looking to verify that because I've never dealt with this before and, uh. That may be true, but if so, we certainly want to understand what process. Is that a board vote or? It's, it's, it would seem surprising to me.
Yeah.
It, it would seem, but obviously he was a former finance director, so he may be right. I'm looking to verify that, uh, but we could end up with, uh, you know, eighty one thousand. Well, we have eighty one thousand. Available for a capital project, whether that needs a board vote or a county meeting vote, I don't know, but, uh.
So would you in general look to something that's already identified versus?
That's what I would bring up, yeah.
Even if something that's already been voted on at town meeting?
Not if it's already funded, but something like with the, with the windowsill, uh, you know, we funded. The, basically the diagnostics of that, but not that are prepared.
Yeah.
So that, that might be something that could be accelerated or, or do eighty one grands. For the, you know, most, uh, urgent.
Family on the walls.
I'm sorry.
The flooring project down there, I mean, it's just a.
Just, you know, just. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, there's, there's that.
Was that the H pack?
Yeah.
They already used, uh.
Uh, you have appropriated ARBA. But the money hasn't actually been spent yet.
So we could use ARBA on Rich Bridge again.
All right, so I'll, I'll let you know. I, I don't know, I don't know what the method is, but it looks like it's, it's found money. Um, this D P U, I, I really, this is something I've cracked my head about because I've been invited to a Zoom meeting tomorrow afternoon. If I go to this, I will be in meetings the entire day, like without. And so it will be four thirty or five in the afternoon before I have five minutes. So I got the invite for like tomorrow at three thirty. I'm like. Why, you know. I, I, I feel like I'm getting dragged into things that like.
Yeah, so this is about that.
Was not gonna affect my time.
A little bit of justification.
Yeah, it's just a D P U. I just, I don't know that this is our fight to fight.
No.
It's probably not a good use of time at this point.
That's my feeling, yeah.
I think they want us to jump on board if that's important to that.
Right, yeah, yeah. So my, my thought is I'm gonna.
I think that's a good.
Okay, all right, good, good, good.
Yeah, I was confident on that. Um, I was debating whether or not it made sense. I don't know if I can anywhere.
And then this last one, this is actually one of my meetings tomorrow is a webinar on the back earth and the infrastructure law. That is a good use of time because I need to learn more. So I included some information we got. Uh, it seems like this, you know, at least what we received is primarily transportation related. I'm gonna be listening more in terms of like. Water to learn and see what I can learn. If the doctor's going to be certain we're not already aware of.
But also that was, this is the first time we haven't looked at this, um. I was wondering if there was anything in here that might be relevant to, uh, the bridges.
Yeah.
So the, they will be learning there. All right, so, uh. Uh, why don't we go back to item I? So I did put together some information. I, I just worked on it today, uh. And I don't really think it's ready for prime time, but, uh. I'll just kind of update you on where I'm at and then I can, I can put something around, but, and I'm not expecting you to look at this. And see it up on the screen because it's, uh. You know, the, too much text and too small, but. What I did is I took everything from the report that Wendy had put together from early August that reflected your input and, uh. Did the doctor's the same information. The, the bulk phase means it's something that's kind of, in my, it's like already significantly underway. There's been some, you know, effort toward it. There's, in some cases, there's a draft that's like at the ten yard line. That doesn't mean it's important and it's worth getting done, but it means that even, you know, so there are some things that are like so close. Uh, but I'm gonna skip through these because these are all information you've seen before. I'm gonna skip that. I wanted to. Try to focus on some things that, that I'm trying to do and that you're trying to do. I think that we're already trying to do that I do think will help. Yield some results. Uh. From my piece. These interdepartmental working groups. It's really important to where I'm trying to get as a manager. Uh, and it's something that in other towns I've worked in have been pre-existing and it's just how they did things here for reasons I won't get into. It's been more something we've had to build. It hasn't been as organic, but the last couple of years, especially the last year and a half, we've really. You know, made, uh, kind of leaps and bounds with that, but it's still. You know, I'm still not where I want to be. I still haven't had a kickoff meeting with the public services working group. I have a list of what that. Is comprised of, what departments that's comprised of, but, you know, I, I don't like starting something I can't finish. And one of my, the issues I'm having with my schedule is if I'm looking to have. You know, finance administration, you know, work group models. Bi-weekly, planning and land management, bi-weekly, infrastructure, maybe more like every month or two. And public ser, or public services, let's say every month. That ends up being a fair number of meetings. Those are meetings I really want to have. But I can't, uh, you know, I, I've had a hard time like putting them on people's calendar when I know my own bandwidth is so limited. And I don't want to ru, rush into something where I'm underprepared and then the meeting's not working. Why don't let people roll their eyes and say. Why are we having meetings for the sake of meetings? Like to have these really take hold and be useful. They need to be organized and, and, and I think we've had some very, very good meetings in the planning and land management. Primarily because we have some dedicated professional staff who have, you know, have kind of made it their job to make sure those. We have agendas and we have stuff that we're working, but that's where I'm trying to get to. The reason I haven't like made that happen all the way is really because of my own personal bandwidth. And I'd like to get to where I'm spending more time. In inter, in like staff working meetings than preparing for evening meetings. Like I go to a lot of evening meetings and. Compress a huge amount of time. Uh, second thing I, I've been. Doing in some instances, I'd like to get more so is to really have clear. Clearly designated project managers for the major projects, just like we've seen that really paid off with some of the, you know, once like the page study or the. The Van de Kie River Road, you know, it's really great to have a point person other than the town manager whose shift's gonna make it their. Job to, to push that week in, week out. I would like to get to where we have better clarity on the staff support roles relative to boards, commissions and committees. There are still a number of committees that, and, and I'm not saying attending meetings, but I, but I do think having like a point person. Because if it's not a point person, it's me. And so that's why. And so that's why I've gotten dragged into main names. So there's third committees where like scheduling around me and I'm like, I can't be going to this committee on a sustained basis. I, it doesn't leave enough in the tank for what I have to do with this board and Bing, common capital and some of the others that absolutely need to be at that meeting. These special projects pages on the website, you know, it doesn't sound like much, but it takes time to do that. It really takes time. And so I don't want to invest that time unless it's going to pay off and that relies on having a short list of, shorter list of priorities so we can justify that time to not create, not to degrade them, but maintain them and keep them current. Reorganizing network servers, that is, that sounds like really easy. It's not. That's like an enormous amount of work that's been on my list for five years. And, and really we haven't made a lot of progress. It's extraordinarily frustrating for me because it contributes to daily inefficiency. And if I could just stop time for like a week, it could all be fixed. But I, that's not the way it works and it's just, it's, it's very frustrating. But I want you to know, those are some of the things I'm working toward that will help me get all of the departments kind of aligned and knowing what the priorities are and what the work program is. Some of the things the board's doing and your review of the charges is terrific. I think really, really worthwhile and I'm glad that you initiated that and are sticking with it. The liaisons to the boards and committees, I think is very, very positive with the objective, I think, being to align the work plans. I don't think we're there yet with the charges, but I think that's a good total to kind of get, you know, this is a long-term effort to get to where the committees ideally are prioritizing the same things you as the appointee under where you would want them prioritizing. We've got to have, you know, a durable priorities list that's not changing week to week or day to day because I can't give consistent direction to staff. And I can't honestly even keep staff updated when things are changing so quickly. You know, especially when I'm looking at a work week where I might have twenty hours of meetings booked during the working hours. Like I'm, it's, it's just the time is very, very tight. So I think we just need to, when new priorities are added, you know, are brought forward out of order, I just think we collectively need to be clear about what, what we're going to deprioritize. Because all I know is my stance is that I often only hear about what we're not doing. And, but I look at what we are doing, I'm like, why am I always under defensive about what we're not doing when people are talking so much? One thing, I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but I think maybe some kind of chairs roundtable just as a way to keep the broader universe, the committees like a prize with just like an open forum, you know? I think that could be, that's something to think about. That could be, because we're not, I'm not trying to like keep anyone out of the process. It's just, it's just, you know, it's very hard for me to keep my time focused and staff time focused when we're constantly like juggling too many things. And then just to remember that most of the staff time is toward the baseline functions. It's not toward the smaller less, it's toward the, the day-to-day stuff. And so we go a whole week or a whole month and not have a lot to show for it. But you're paying the bills, you're making payroll, you're, you're, you know, doing bonds issue. You know, there's a hundred things. So, so I get these like work groups. So I did take what, I did take that list and I'll, I can email these next four slides around because you'll really need to look at them closely. I did take everything on that list and put it into where I think it wrapped. Doesn't mean I'm right, it's just where I, you know, and some of these are things that are very, you know, obvious to everybody. You know, some of the water issues are obviously, you know.
That was everything on the list?
No, this is.
Four.
This gets into these working groups. And so, because what I want to do is have each of those four working groups of department heads like that they know these are the projects. And, and some of them are in multiple working groups. But at least so when we go into a meeting with public services, like we kind of all know what we're working on. And so I've organized things in those four brackets. So this is finance administration and some of them is debatable, is it this or is it that? But, but so I'll just email these around rather than, you know, going through them.
This is breaking that, how much of that is water?
I think the water's huge, yeah. And, and I think we need to remind ourselves that some of what we're trying to do as an organization is stuff that, that has been vectoring for years, if not decades. You know, water definitely, you know, things like the MOU with Newbury Port having been not legally in effect since two thousand and five. I mean, that's something that's, you know, and yet here we are, we're trying to do it. Elliot Funds, you know, Solden Sailors Building, Middle Street Bridge, Ape School Study. A lot of these are things that aren't new. It's just we as an organization are trying to actually tackle these in a meaningful way. And we should be proud of that. I think we are proud of that. But let's not forget that we're trying to do these things. So when these things come in, we have to stay focused on these very challenging things we're trying to do or we're never going to get them done. So, yeah, so, yeah, so then planning and land management, I've, I've done this. I'll email this around, but this is kind of how I look at things. And some of, and, and I think I said the last time, the dollar sign means there's actually an appropriation toward it. And a couple of things I put in multiple years. And I think the, some of the things that I'm looking at as projects are really becoming part of the baseline, things like the invasive eradication. Right now, that's an episodic year after year. That is very clear, that's going in the direction of just getting built into the operating budget, becoming part of our baseline work and no longer a special project. It was just going to be something we do. Public services and then infrastructure. So, so I'll email these around, but I think, and I actually did take a, this is, this all didn't fit on a slide, but I actually then took them all and put them into one just, and, and I have a hard copy printed out, but it's basically, you know, it's a lot. It's all active stuff that we're all working on week in, week out. And I don't know if maybe one approach on kind of one of the issues I think we're, we're trying to resolve here is how to make that use of the meeting time that gives the board, you know, that allow you to be as fully engaged as you want to be without it becoming, you know, like the suggestion of meeting like twice as often or already forty or forty-two times a year. There's a tipping point where obviously that implicates enormous amount of time to prepare for follow-up from all those meetings, which at some point becomes, I think, very counterproductive. Maybe we need to, in terms of the agendas, maybe we need to have thinner agendas and just have it understood that at any given board meeting, anything that's like identified as being part of the work program is in bounds for discussion. And then maybe there's something that's like, you know, maybe it looks like this in the packet. And then instead of like my office preparing all this backup, you know, we just, I know that every time we meet, you know, it might be asked about all this stuff and I'll just tell you where we are. Instead of like, I just think about the amount of time that we're spending on meetings and on packets. And you add it all up, it's a huge amount of time. And I do think it's gotten, it actually, it's not new. It's, it's been the way, it's the way the whole time it's been here. You know, because of the board and committee structure, we're spending a lot more time preparing for like these evening meetings than we are actually collaborating as a staff team of professionals because we don't have the time because we're preparing for night meetings. And it's really unfortunate when I, when I know we have people on staff who are underutilized, who could take on more, but that takes my time to keep them current, to keep them fully engaged and to get them to where they're, you know, up to speed and stay up to speed. I can't do that if I'm chained to my desk, but in the other meeting packets. So I just need, I need you to understand that that is a, a real conflict in terms of my own time management is how much time can I put toward mentoring and building a team of staff if I'm, you know, like personally accountable for all the crap that goes into, into these meetings? So I do want to get to where more of those recurring functions are handled by support staff because I just am not feeling, you know, it, it's just, it's been five years. And it's like, I, I don't feel like it's, you know, we're getting stuff done, but it's like running a corpse and, and. So some of the things, you know, some of the objectives I set out for, you know, I'd like to, one thing, we have a lot of changes going on in people's job descriptions. That's been, you know, between the wage and classification study and now the W restructure. That's a major thing. So I, one of the things that concerns me is making sure that employees who either have taken on or who are expected to take on more responsibilities have the knowledge and the access to the training that they're going to need to be successful. And I worry about that sometimes because I feel like as an organization, we're moving so quickly. I'm not finding all the time, I feel I need to help make sure people are totally clear on how their job is changing and what I need them to do, what we need them to do. I would like to continue to try to standardize some recurring functions in a way that reduces my personal time impact while maintaining my expectation of quality. But that involves training and handling all of which I want to do. I'm happy, I'm good at doing, but it's tough to find the sustained time. Like I said, you know, this whole liaison with different boards and committees, I think is going to be really helpful because I just, I'm in the middle of too much. That's death of a thousand cuts. And I think if we can come up with, you know, some kind of regular communication among the board and boards and committees and the general public in a way that actually reinforces our stated priorities rather than being an opportunity for people to say, oh, what about this? What about that? Because I feel like that's what happens when we have these discussions. We hear about the things that we're not doing. I think we need to do a better job of, once we arrive at a shared list of kind of priorities, to really get that out there so that everyone who's involved with the town government and a board or committee knows how much we are doing. Because I think if they know that, hopefully people will support what we're trying to do and not just always tell us, oh, what about this? What about that? Well, you're always going to think a thing, you know? So we, we need to make a decision and, and commit to it in terms of what the priorities are.
Hi.
How did I say?
You're already released? Hey.
Hey there.
Still going on?
Nope, you're on.
So we get the briefing?
I'm on the briefing last day. Baby, pardon.
So, you know, it'll make more sense when I, when I, you know, was around, you can really, you know, look at it closely. But I did come up with, you know, some notes on just some of that kind of characteristics that I think are relevant to where we are as an organization, we're trying to get to. And I think that was some of what we're already trying to do. I do think we can get there, but I think a, a win for me would be if, let's say, by the end of the calendar year, we had a multi, you know, a list of like multi-years of priorities that we all kind of really agreed and said yes. And, and what that means is that there's going to be things in year two or year three that we're just going to need to say, yeah, that's not this year's issue. Because if we can't learn to say that, you know, we're just, it's, it's, you know, it's just going to grind us into the ground, you know? Because you can't, you know, there, there has to be a point where enough is enough. There has to be a point where, you know, your work's, an honest day's work, an honest week's work, and you can actually like, you know, feel good about that and not just be worrying about, let's not get it done. There's always things that aren't it done.
Did you have any sense going through it, how your priorities lined up with the ones that me, right?
I didn't really, no, I did all of this today, so I didn't do anything. I didn't have time to really.
Yeah, I was curious how it winds up. I, I would think it would be crazy.
I think it's pretty similar, yeah. The other, there's some things I want to take a little further, like, and, you know, one thing just for myself, I put in like these, these numbers, like the number of staff. So we just need to remind ourselves that like, you know, treasure collectors is a 1.0, like no support.
That concentration.
So just, yeah, so we just need to, you know, kind of moderate or calibrate the priorities to the resources and reminding ourselves that most of the staff time is toward the baseline stuff. That isn't very glamorous, but I can promise if it didn't get done, you would hear about it. There's a lot of stuff we don't hear about because staff are doing their jobs every day. But I'll, I'll focus on the meetings or everything else. So, yeah, like I said, I just, I, I didn't have time to really polish things up, but I, I have been working on it and I, I do want to. So what I'll do is I'll send you my, I'll send you these, these four slides and to see if you think that's within the ballpark. I think some of the challenges I see are really some of the other committees that I just feel like, you know, they just won't take note for an answer. And it's like, you know, it's, I think the more people know about the big picture and what we're kind of doing, is going to be helpful.
It might not be, if people tend to be just focused on their own agenda.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, you know, there's a lot of things, it's, you know, it's like, is it, oh, the page school study. People probably don't really have any idea, just to take this as one example, but how much staff time, including my time, week in and week out, goes into that? Or the stole place study? I mean, how many rounds of like review and Zoom meetings? And, you know, there's a lot that goes on before it even gets here. But if, if it didn't happen, it wouldn't be, you know, the product wouldn't be as good. And that's just, there's no, I just don't know if people understand how much time it takes to keep all these things on track.
All right.
But. You can't say anything now because Angus is overwhelmed, so anything would.
Chris, I'm not overwhelmed.
Yeah.
I've been doing this work for 22 years. I'm not overwhelmed. I'm trying to impose.
I'm not making that the negative thought, just saying to throw something out there.
I'm not, I'm trying to impose.
We can talk about.
Let's put it this way, I'm overwhelmed for what you have to do, okay? I don't mean, I don't mean it as a negative to you. I think it's, it's phenomenal what you do.
Yeah.
And it's not a negative towards you. It's just saying I'm not, I wouldn't throw anything outside you right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think you've got too much on the plate. I keep telling you that.
It is too much.
And I, I hope that that list of priorities, once that gets done and the things that pokes at the bottom, people will understand they're there for a reason because there's much bigger issues out there.
Right.
That's going to take a concerted effort, I hope, so to reinforce that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, but again, once, once you get it done, you put it out there. Somebody wants to come and complain or come with a new project, you can say, we don't know where it's going to have to dovetail in at this point.
Right, yeah, it's got to go on the list, which is, it only works if you have a list and it's a meaningful list. And I feel like we've done a lot of lists and we don't yet have a durable list that we all kind of, and part of that's been banned with, you know? But I think, I think we're within reach now, I really do.
I think once you get there, it puts out an awful lot of fires because people will know what you're working on and realize that it's. Now, I have one issue I wouldn't bring up because it's so small compared to the other issues. And it's don't distract from the real issues at hand. Let's get those done.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't medicine as a disrespect.
I'm sorry, I just, I gotta.
No, I mean, I feel overwhelmed hearing everything you have to do. And then when you go through this package, I'm going, this is just one component this week. I get overwhelmed and so I would understand why you would be, I guess. If you're not, that's amazing.
It's, well, you know, it's, it's part of the job. It's just, it's, it's definitely, it's deflating, you know? Like you get to the end of the, you know, like when I wrote that memo on the restructure, you know, it was, it was Friday night and I'm like, I can't believe it's Friday night again and I'm not as far, it's just very frustrating to work so hard. And there's really important stuff that's just not getting the time it needs. And it's no one's fault, you know? It's just, it's part of just a function of local government and people's expectations. I, you know, I had a resident stop in Friday and, you know, took a, you know, almost a half hour of my time. You know, took a, you know, almost a half hour of my time, basically because the. You know, street edge across the street from their property isn't mowed. As frequently as it used to be. And like, and I'm thinking.
That's not even a issue, it should be on your radar.
No, it shouldn't, and I'm sitting there thinking to myself, well, you obviously think it's a good use of my time to be hearing about that.
On a day when you're supposed to be on vacation.
Right, true, yeah, I was, thank you, so, but but it's like, people have an expectation as if it's like a private landscaping crew. And so, you know, and of course I brought it to the attention of the highway foreman, and I know he was in touch with him, and I'm sure it all got worked out, but. These are the things that that in the local, you know, that's why, you know, people have worked in town hall, they get it, cause that's the same as every town. But if, you know, people haven't worked here, I don't think they could even imagine. The range of things that gobble our time, so.
Well, I don't think it is the same in every town hall.
No, the issues aren't, but the.
You've got so many projects, again, because the town has been fortunate financially, so we vote them and.
Yeah.
Then they all have to get dealt with, this is. Historically, from what I've been in town, the project, there's more on the books right now. And every one of them doesn't hit you once, it issue eight or ten or twelve different times. You know, putting out the proposal or managing the contract.
Right.
You know, so. It's a good news, bad news situation, that's why. We're talking about some of that urban money that might get left over and have to get expended away, and it's like, don't do it on projects, do it on purchases, because those can be done, you know, quick. When we get to that point. I think we have to be very careful what other projects we put on the table at this point.
Yeah.
Until we can get some of the bigger ones and move forward a little further.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think just a basic mismatch between kind of, you know, residents' perception of town government and and the reality of town government. That's, that's common in in every town, but.
You should be right.
Yeah, actually Rebecca found something just a week or two ago, and in the file she found, uh. You know, the list of project priorities from DPW from like eight or nine years ago, it had like five items, and that was there. For the year, and it's like. It's just a different standard, as as it should be, I mean, you know, we're not doing anything unimportant.
You know, I think, you know, there's a certain amount. That's, you know, it's legacy projects, don't be bad.
Yeah.
Things were deferred projects, you know, things that should have been done, could have been done. If there was bandwidth, but you know, if if there was structural bandwidth to do them, could have been done years ago, but they never were, so now. They're on your plate. Yeah, on all of our plates, yeah, but, you know, now that things are dealing with, you know, I don't need to go, we all know what some of those things are, but, you know, they. They've been lingering for ten years, twenty years.
But I I do think if we're all aligned, I mean, if we get to where like, these are the twelve like clear top projects. I think if we we start using that kind of, like, you know, that we we're tackling. Legacy issues that have years or decades of of kind of the vector. And, uh, and we're trying to do it all at once, so like, come on, people, let's be focused on paid school. Like, there's no end of, like, you can spend a lot of time just on that project and, uh. And you'll probably think of things that you wouldn't have thought of if you were just doing it quick, you know, so that's where if we do a little less. We can go, you know, deeper and really make sure we don't just like rush and and try to get things done, but. Really do it thoroughly, I I just hate cutting corners and, uh. Uh, when we're doing too much, you know, no choice but to cut corners, and I hate it.
You shouldn't be the avenue-first approach for a lot of these smaller insignificant things. You know, that's a problem, if you're spending time. On a very small issue where the citizen is just irate over something that could be fixed at a much lower level, cause your time and. Energies that are used at bigger issues, or they should be.
Mm-hmm. But to be fair, Angus, some people don't understand that, like, it's okay, they don't have to understand. No, but we, like, that, a good example is like a resident comes in and they say something, and we say, well, that's actually something that that Butch could take care of, or Caitlin. And they say, no, I'd like to talk to him.
Yes, that is a lie. We'll make it up like that, you can see I'm on a, I have a twenty-third, uh, team, years from now, yeah. Well, not really, that's, you shouldn't be there.
It's difficult, and a town-wide government, because because, um, what happens is if, you know, I do have like kind of an open-door policy and. You know, if things start to, if if something that should be a five-minute turns into a longer, you know, we we have strategies where sometimes staff will help. Pay some.
The high sign.
But, uh, but it is, it's challenging in in a town, open town meeting, because, you know, once you start doing that. Someone stands up on the floor of a town meeting, you know, next spring and says, well. I went to see the town manager once and he was too busy for me, and all of a sudden you've lost the room. And it sounds silly, but it it's it's, so that's the tough thing in in this position, where it's a very forward. You're a very public-facing position, even though I'm not elected official, I don't need anyone's vote, other than the appointment of a board. Um, you do have to be really mindful that if people think you're too busy for them, it's like, what am I busy doing? I'm doing it. I'm busy like, you know, eating lunch.
Busy, busy doing work. Again, if a situation like that occurred, and I know it had previously with the FinCon when they got slammed. And nobody defended them, I wasn't at the meeting.
That's right.
I would stand up, and I would say to Casey, you know, appoint a board, it's a personal attack which is unjustified, and secondly. He has higher priority items to deal with, he's, you know, I would defend that situation, I think. We would have to support it.
And that means a lot, because that. Board manager alignment is is really valuable, cause what what can happen is if if people don't, if they feel they were. You know, blown off or whatever, they they will call the board, it's happened before, and and if the board is.
That'd be beautiful.
Apprised of what we're doing, I think the board would, would, you know. Show some deference to the, you know, judgment of the the manager or the staff person, uh, but if you're not aware of what's going on, that, you know, you're gonna call me and say. I need to call Mr. Jones back, and that. But but there have been other boards over the last five years, and.
Good, I will hear about that stuff, we're at the good place.
So, no, we are in a really good, good place, and I wanna, you know, capitalize on that, really this calendar year, cause. We hit January with budget and town meeting, and it's kind of like, this is our window of these next couple of months.
Oh, look at that, you got your, um, pre-cash certified, I look at all the articles and that, you're. Weeks ahead of what you were last year.
We are, we are, yeah.
Uh, but I think that that facilitates everything going through, they can watch that.
Yeah, no, I think we're in a good place, I just, uh, yeah.
And again, with all these, the the horse ride thing and the races and all that stuff, when the applications come in. It does not feel, I I would have no problem just rejecting it, say it's incomplete, well, I'm presenting it, I mean. We waste, we wasted time on an awful lot of these things, that, you know, you know, can you come back and do this? Can you sue the police? Can you do that? Can we get a map? Let's not even see it, it's not ready for prime time.
Mm-hmm.
Just another way to get more efficient at things.
All right, so I'll I'll send something around by email to reach you on and and continue this, uh.
It's good.
Ranger.
Yeah. You know. Who wants all the deficit stuff? Who wants all the deficit stuff?